To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no additions and deletions to the agenda, so we'll move to public comment. Public comment. We've got Carol Snyder, followed by Mark Wig. As you come up, Carol, we just go to one of the two podiums. You're going to have three minutes to speak. Is Carol here? Maybe signed up for the wrong thing. Mr. Wig. Carol Snyder, I think, is at the wrong one, but we'll make sure here. It says Friends of D Street Field, which would not be ours. Okay, both of them. Mark Wig, you're here to speak for the Housing Authority, Mark?
Yes, I am.
Great. So again, you've got, thanks for being here, number one. You've got three minutes. After two minutes, a yellow light will come on right in front of you there and blink and sort of terrify you. And then you'll have another minute and the red light will come on and then you'll have to end your comments. So with that, your name and your order address and floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Mark Wig. I live at 1950 Saginaw Street South. And I recently had the opportunity to hear Ron Hayes talk about the homeless situation in Salem. And he mentioned that in Portland, they're paying $400,000 plus for one low-income housing unit. And I, you know, to me, that's, how many are you going to build if each one costs $400,000? And he was very proud of the fact that he was able to get something done where the housing unit for low-income housing is about $140,000. And they're proposing that, you know, in Salem, and that's really good. But again, how much money do we have? How big is the problem? And can you address that problem at $140,000 apiece? And I don't think you can. And so the question I have for the Housing Authority is, what people on the street need is, number one, lowest-income thing, you know, the cheapest thing is lockers. A place to lock up your goods so you can go to that job interview and not have your stuff swiped off the street. That's pretty cheap. You can do that. The other thing they need is, maybe they need a parking lot or a place to camp, something out of the rain. And that's not that expensive. You can build RV parks and campgrounds for less than $10,000 a unit. So if you're going to address housing and the need for housing the homeless, and you don't want them camping on the city streets, provide convenient, safe housing that might be at the lower end, like camping, or just a parking lot. Lockers, at least provide some lockers for people. Anyway, and showers, bathrooms, that'd be nice, you know? Those are ways to help people that are on the street get a job, get a start, and you can afford that. Anyway.
Hey.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wig? Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to the Housing Authority of the City of Salem? Okay, hearing none. Vice Chair Lewis, do you have a motion here for us?
I do. I move passage of the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Nanki, to approve the consent calendar. Commissioner Lewis, you want to speak to your motion?
Sure. There's a few things on the consent calendar. First is the minutes from the May 8, 2017 Housing Authority meeting. There is an action item, a request that needs approval for the new office assistant position for the Salem Housing Authority. And I've got to say, I've been waiting all the extra work that they've been doing and not asking for any additional help was, from a business standpoint, kind of silly, so I'm glad to see this request. Two resolutions that need adopting. One is the, for the Salem Housing Authority 2017 Public Housing Agency Plan, Annual Capital Fund Plan, and the Five-Year Plan. These are all required by HUD to be submitted. HUD is the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The, the second resolution that needs to be adopted is the revision of the Administrative Plan for Section 8 Housing Program, also a mandate by HUD. I thought the transportation bill was big, but this is 520 pages, so if you can't sleep at night, this is your cure. And then lastly, no, that's it. That's it for the agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion made by Commissioner, Vice Chair Lewis, and seconded by Commissioner Nanki to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Mr. Wilch, you have any words of wisdom for us here before we adjourn?
I sure do. My back hurts a little bit from carrying all that paper around.
So is my, so is my, yeah.
I just have a couple of comments I want to share. In both the PHA plan and the administrative plan, they are heavy documents and there's a lot of smallish kinds of things in there. And then there's some more important items that I want to bring to your attention. Both of these plans have a revision, a revised criminal violations list. That's the first time we've done that since I've been here. We're trying to ease up so we can have better opportunity to house folks that are maybe at the margin. We also are changing our way of allocating our resources to Section 8 from the standpoint, it used to be that a single individual could not work their way up our waitlist for any, in any time. And so in our wisdom, with the homeless plan that we're hopefully, hopefully getting into, this will allow single individuals to get on the waitlist and work their way up so they can have a housing, a good, housing as also. Our current, our, our SHA, we're changing our waitlist to a time and local. So you come to the waitlist, you get on the waitlist, and you're tracked, and you work your way up, time and date, right? So everybody has a chance. We also, in the PHA plan, provide quite a bit of information about the Rental Assistance Demonstration Project that, that we're in, which is a HUD program that allows public housing authorities to trans, transfer their public housing into a more manageable financial situation. And so we've got rest of our 245 public housing units that are in a phase to be re, rehabilitated and also re-financially reset. The final thing that I wanted to mention, which is always important to us, and we pay a great deal to this, there's two items having to do with violence against women. And so we've bolstered that very strongly to make sure that when families and women have violence in their background, that they're able to come to the Housing Authority, get a voucher right away, and be safe. So, thank you.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Andy, for the work you're doing for the city. There are no public hearings, no special orders of business, no information reports, so this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem is adjourned.
This meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem for June 12 to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Board Member Kizer?
Present.
Board Member Anderson?
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member McCoy?
Here.
Board Member Osik?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Cook?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
And Chair Bennett?
Here. Commissioner McCoy, do we have approval of additions and deletions for this?
There are no additions or deletions.
Thank you. We have no reports from boards, commissions, or committees. Okay? Public comment. Mr. Wig.
Thank you, Mark Wig, 1950 Saginaw Street South. And as I just was talking about housing and homeless issues, urban renewal is one of the areas that if you give incentives to people and really emphasize the need for providing low-income, moderate-income housing, that could help. We have a lot of urban renewal areas in the city. We have great potential to use those urban renewal areas to expand the housing market, especially for the lower income. We have a very tight housing market. This is an opportunity to do it. Urban renewal is supposed to help on blighted areas and helping to restore those. I don't see urban renewal areas having that emphasis. It's more of, come in with a proposal and we'll look at it. And somehow, there has to be, let's be more proactive on that, if possible. And so I've asked the council to encourage city staff to do that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Mark, thanks for coming. I just want to make sure you know that the city currently has a urban renewal grant system that housing is on the top of the list, and so there are efforts going on to do just what you said.
Yeah, and that was one of the places that Ron Hayes mentioned, is that it was through urban renewal. But I see that we have six, eight different urban renewal areas, and why don't we have more? And maybe the question is, why don't we have more? And what can we do to get more? And, yeah.
Councilor McCoy?
Just a question, Mr. Wig. You know, you've got an interest here and it's great, and I would encourage you, one of the things we're doing here is going through a strategic plan, and we've got a variety of work groups. And one of the work groups is affordable housing, social services, and the homeless. So we're, all those issues you've sort of come and addressed us with, we're going to be working on here for the next three or four months. And I'd encourage you to, you know, at least watch, watch for that committee's worksite. They're open to the public, and we'd sure as heck love to have you in there weighing in and listening to the debate and hearing what you think about it.
Yeah, thank you. And, so Letts Tribes recently built a RV park out a little past Portland Road, 100 units or something like that. I'm sure it didn't cost them $140,000 per unit. If you go to the KOA right now, about half of those units at the KOA are permanent residents. It's low-income housing. It's easy to build. You know, I don't know whether that is part of the urban renewal stuff, but, you know, if it's possible, you know, hey, that's a way to get a lot of housing. Yeah, thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Councilor McCoy, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the consent calendar. Okay, what do we have on the consent calendar tonight? We've got the minutes of the May 8 Urban Renewal Agency meeting. We've got a resolution approving the revision to the Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Capital Improvement Grant Program Policies to add the objective of exterior beautification projects. Under action items, we've got an amendment to an agreement with Northwest Custom Structures to the development agreement. We've had with them, we're extending, extending the time they have to meet some of the requirements of that agreement. We have an improvement, see, we've got, we're authorizing the executive director to execute the attached improvement reimbursement agreement with the Urban Department of Administrative Services, seeking reimbursement for up to $400,000 in the Mill Creek Industrial Park Urban Renewal Area, funding for construction of Mill Creek Drive improvements and silt fence installation in support of development at the Mill Creek Corporate Center. That's what's in the consent calendar tonight.
It was really interesting. Any questions for Councilor McCoy?
Nobody's ever told me that before.
I was thinking about that last one with the silt, and there's a lot of stuff there. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Have we had a motion? Yeah. Say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion passes. Information reports. Ms. Rutherford?
Yes, Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. This evening in our information reports, we have our economic development update, and our economic development manager, Annie Gorsky, is here this evening to share some of our efforts with you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Annie Gorsky. I'm the city's economic development manager. Just to highlight for you a few things in the report this evening, we're highlighting activity at the Mill Creek Corporate Center in southeast Salem. This is an area that we have ready for large lots, for industrial properties to locate. Henningson Cold Storage just opened their doors this month with 180,000 square feet of cold storage, free storage space. That's available for folks in our food manufacturing sector, so this is exciting. It accounts for about 50% of our industrial or activity here in Salem, so we'll see, continue to see them grow. We're also seeing two buildings underway at Mill Creek as well, totaling about 100,000 square feet, with another three phases planned. These are industrial buildings where smaller businesses in Salem that are growing have a place to grow. So we'll continue to see that activity. That's near the corner of Almsville and Kubler Boulevard. So if you see trucks and activity out there, that's underway. We're also entertaining two additional proposals out at Mill Creek for significant development, so you'll see more activity. We're finding that because other communities in the Portland area are running out of spaces for large buildings, and when I say large, million-square-foot buildings, we're hearing about those in Salem, because we have at Mill Creek one of the large, or last remaining parcels where that development can occur. On the small business side, last year, we launched a small business retention program, so you'll see in the report tonight some information about that. Since April of last year, we've met with over 100 companies. When I say small, these are companies with 25 employees or less. This is really where the growth in our community and our job growth is coming from. Statistically, we know that about 70% of our job growth comes from existing companies, so we're focusing a lot of our efforts there. And it ties back to the comment earlier about urban renewal. When we're out meeting with these companies, when we learn that they are in an expansion mode or need a new piece of equipment, if they are located in an urban renewal area, we're able to help them with our grant program. If they're not, then we're able to link them to other programs statewide or regionally. So we're doing a lot of work there. And I guess the last thing I would mention in the report tonight is activity happening in our West Salem and our North Gateway area, specifically to support our food-related sector, so small food producers in the community. So with that, if you have any answer questions.
Councilor Lewis?
Thanks, Annie. One question, and this is a follow-up to Mr. Wig, is, do all of the urban renewal areas have housing as a goal? And if so, are there programs like grants or loans or matches available?
So we have seven urban renewal areas in the city, and those all have specific urban renewal plans with specific goals and objectives and projects. We can only fund those projects if they're identified in the plan. And just off the top of my, my head, I would say that probably three of those programs have housing as a goal or as an objective, particularly our downtown urban renewal area, our West Salem urban renewal area, and our North, excuse me, our North Gateway urban renewal area.
Some of our urban renewal areas are in industrially zoned areas, which aren't suitable for housing. They don't have the services.
Councilor Cook?
How, hi, thanks for coming out tonight, Annie. How do people find out about your programs? Do you have to find them, or do they find you in urban development, economic development?
So the outreach that I mentioned, our small business retention program, is us going out to them. We're really trying to do that more. So, so, and when we're going out, we're sharing information we've put together on our programs, rat cards or booklets. In addition, we've added several new resource pages to our city website. So if you haven't been to the city website, we have something called a business resource page. And on that, we have pages specifically for small business and startup folks, you know, with resources specifically for that sector, and a list of all of our grant programs. And then we also, certainly, we're getting calls from folks and sitting down with them and sharing the information. So I would say web, printed materials when we're out, and then responding to inquiries, so.
Thank you.
Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a good report, Annie, and I have more of a comment than a question. I was very intrigued by your telling us that 70% of the job growth comes from existing companies. And I know that SEDCor has told us in the past that they are spending 85% of their money and efforts on existing companies that are already here and building those jobs, both of which I think are terrific things. And following up with Councilor Cook's questions, your small business retention program and, well, your startups, it sounds like you are trying to spend more effort at, at interacting with these folks, and I would encourage you to do that. And I bet you could get the 70% up to even higher. And that's really what we're looking for, is the jobs and the businesses and the people that are already here. We want to help them grow.
Yes, we do too.
Councilor McCoy?
You know, Annie, just a question popped into my head, because as I understand it, those PAC trust buildings are going to be for smaller businesses to have, not incubator quite, but they're going to have a place to rent and run their op. What is the commercial or the vacancy rate on the commercial side, right now, do you know?
Our industrial vacancy rate is right around 4%. The commercial rate, I'm looking at Kristen, I don't have that at the top of my head, but it is relatively low as well, and more familiar with the industrial rate.
So these are, these are direly needed, in other words?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
We, we have very little industrial flex space within the city. And to add to what Annie said, in addition to the, the small business outreach work that, that has been going on, we are starting to also expand our focus to that startup entrepreneurial ecosystem that's maybe not in a space yet, that's still in a home or in shared space, to get a really good handle on who those individuals are and what their needs are.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate your report this evening. It's very good. I have no special orders of business. We have one public hearing. The recorder would...
The Urban Renewal Agency will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony on the fiscal year 2017-18 budget as recommended by the Budget Committee.
Thank you. I have... Kelly, you have a report. Good.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Jacobs, the city's budget officer. This, this is very brief. The Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee recommended a budget to the agency board on May 15, 2017. The agency board is required to hold a public hearing on the recommended budget. In compliance with state public budget law, this evening's public hearing was noticed in the Statesman Journal on June 2, 2017. Following the public hearing, staff recommends the Urban Renewal Agency Board deliberate on the Budget Committee recommended budget and direct staff to return on June 26, 2017 with a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2017-18 Urban Renewal Agency Budget. At that meeting, staff may request the agency board amend the fiscal year 2017-18 budget approval made this evening to include any rebudgeted purchase orders or carryover projects from the current fiscal year budget, which staff are currently identifying. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two people signed up to testify. I believe you signed up, I'm just going to try this. You may have signed up on the wrong roster, and I want to make sure. Kathy Syke? Got it right, huh? Okay. Did you want to speak on this one? You wanted to talk about Marine Drive, didn't you?
Yes, in West Salem.
We'll call you, we've got your name, I'm sorry. Nice try, though. Joanne Cunningham, you also, I bet, wanted, do you want to talk about this one?
I want to talk about the urban renewal downtown.
The urban renewal, yep, good.
Am I at the right place?
You're in the right place. Excellent.
My name's Joanne Cunningham. My husband and I recently purchased the 1915 rooming house at 656-658-Center. It's quite an eyesore, and when I saw that there might be money available for downtown eyesores, I immediately started inquiring, because we are making an effort to improve this to livable conditions for low income. We have 13 units. We have people who were homeless for 10 years or more who are living there now. And we did not disturb anyone who was currently there. We did not raise any rent. We are just trying to make improvements. But we are having trouble raising money to do that. It was very frustrating to find out that our building was one-half block too far east to be included in this urban renewal plan. So I am asking for an exception for our building, which is a solid building, and we could provide some very much-needed housing that is close to other services, but we do need some help from the city if you want some low-income housing.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Okay, yes. For staff, when staff comes up? Okay, I'll remember that. Okay, thank you, Joanne. Okay, any questions for staff? Councilor?
Thank you. So, in, in response to Joanne's testimony, is that possible, to grant exceptions for properties outside of the urban renewal area?
Generally, the process would be to expand a boundary to take in additional property. In this urban renewal area, we have a unique circumstance of having a special levy and restrictions on expanding our boundary. So if we were to expand the boundary, then we would forfeit that special levy income, which this year, the collection's about 2.4 million out of about 6.5 million of anticipated revenue. So we would be foregoing a significant amount of our income if we were to expand our boundary downtown to take in any additional property.
Councilor Hoy?
This probably isn't the right forum, but have you spoken with these folks about the other, other programs that might be available to them through your department? I know that you're not, you have other options available, and maybe you could speak offline to them about those options?
Yes, we don't through urban renewal, but we could discuss whether the property is appropriate for our home or CDBG grants.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Cook?
Coming right at you.
Councilor Cook, did you have something?
Same thing as this.
Okay, great. Any further questions? Very good. See, this public hearing thing works really well. Okay, I think that's... Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this budget? Okay, close the public hearing. Councilor McCoy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a, a motion. I move that we hold a public hearing on the fiscal year 2017-18 Budget Committee recommended budget and direct staff to return on June 26, 2017 with a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2017-18 Urban Renewal Agency Budget.
Any discussion? Okay, all, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Okay, if there's no further business, the Urban Renewal Agency is adjourned. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for, for June 12 to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Councilor Kizer?
Present.
Councilor Anderson?
Also.
Councilor Nanki?
Here.
Councilor McCoy?
Here.
Councilor Osik?
Here.
Councilor Hoy?
Here.
Councilor Cook?
Here.
Councilor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay, Councilor McCoy, any additions, deletions?
No, there aren't, Mr. Mayor.
Revisions?
There's a revision. Oh, that's a different one, okay. But I do have another motion. I move to reorder the agenda, move item 4C, Public Hearing, to amend the PH Zone to 4A, to the head of the agenda.
So, he's renumbering those items?
I'm renumbering it, so we're going to move 4C here at first, then go 4, yeah. We're going to go CABD.
Thank you. Councilor Kaiser seconded. Are there any discussion questions? Is that clear? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Passes. Okay, do we have any council comments? Okay, well, I want to make, I'm going to make two quick ones. There are openings on the Cultural and Tourism Promotion Advisory Board. So, anyone in the public interested, this is the organization that handles the transient occupancy tax funds. This is a lot of our tourism. It's the entertainment that happens during the summer, a lot of the things that go on that the city has some partial sponsorship of are funded through this board. If you're interested in this, please contact your city councilor or contact the mayor's office. We'll get you signed up and try to figure out if we can get you appointed. And I also want to announce to the council and to the neighborhood groups, August 15th will be our special awards evening for volunteers, our volunteer award evening. That's the one we have out on the Peace Plaza. We give out a whole batch of awards. I hope you will take a look at these and make nominations, including volunteer recognition of various types for a whole range of things. So, I'd ask you to not keep that in mind. We need to get those in as soon as you can. Thank you very much. Okay? We'll close that, move on to proclamations.
Point of order, if I could, I, on my desk at least, was a packet of additions for the city council. Did we approve those yet?
It's written testimony.
Okay. Never mind.
No, we're okay. Okay, I'm going to invite up, okay, I'm going to invite up Irma Dowd, Mike Goderbaugh, Rich Prager, and Richard Swires. Okay, I have a proclamation for you guys. Whereas the City of Salem employees provide critical services and protect the health and safety of its residents and visitors, and whereas Salem Public Works employees construct, maintain, and operate the infrastructure necessary that fulfill basic urban needs, including safe and reliable streets, healthy and plentiful water, well-functioning storm drainage, proper treatment of wastewater, and maintaining parks facilities, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of our public works officials, and whereas the health and safety and comfort of a community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the public works department is influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the important work they perform, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim June 29th, 2017, as Public Works Day and encourage community members to participate in Public Works Day at Riverfront Park on June 29th, as well as ask people to join me in recognizing the importance and standard, of the standards for excellence in the public works department and the contributions of public works officials that make every day to our health, safety, and quality of life dated this 12th day of June, 2017. So, thank you.
You know, every year, this has gotten bigger and bigger, and we always enjoy seeing the smiling faces of not only the kids, but the adults. The staff and all the members that show up down there have done an excellent job of making it fun with their education on wildlife and all the types of things we do in streams and control and stuff. So, please join us down there. It's been a great success for 14 years now?
Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Bye-bye. And then, one other proclamation, the special election results for May 16th, 2017. Whereas a special election was held on the 16th day of May, 2017, at which time ballot measure 24-420 was voted upon, and whereas the results of the election have been recorded in the minute record of the council, and now, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, Oregon, proclaim and declare that at said election, the following ballot measure was approved by the voters and is adopted. Ballot measure 24-420, City of Salem Public General Obligation Bond, signed in Salem, Oregon, this 12th day of June, 2017, Chuck Bennett, Mayor. And I don't know who to give this to. I'm thinking about the chief, but I'll give it to somebody.
That's worthy of applause as well.
That is. Okay. Just turn the page here. We have a presentation this evening from the, on the Intergenerational Safe Streets Grant from Stevens Middle School, and I'm not sure who's going to introduce this or how this will be done.
Hi, everyone. My name is Megan.
And I'm Emily.
And we're OSU soon-to-be grads, and we're here with Stevens Middle School, and we're going to be talking about the intergenerational walking project that they've been working on for eight weeks, together with the Center 50+ volunteers. The Stevens Middle School Leadership Class has created safe routes around their neighborhood, connecting different points of health, and all of these routes have been checked with the Safe Routes to School Walkability Audit.
So, going off what Megan said, a big part of the project was identifying these points of health within their neighborhood. And so, a point of health is a resource that anyone in the community can use that's free or low-cost, that encourages or promotes health, so good nutrition, physical activity, stress reduction, and group support. And the reason that we focus on these points of health is because research shows that when we engage in these behaviors, there are, we are more likely to have better health outcomes overall. And so, ultimately, the project was meant to promote physical activity and health, all along with highlighting things and conditions that are important to walkability, like sidewalks, good lighting, and pleasant scenery. And so, now, we would love to have our first group come up and tell you about their experience.
Hi, my name is Brian. This is Jenny, and this is our route from elementary to middle school. All right, so, our route is about three miles, takes about 15 minutes to complete. We chose this route because schools are a place of fun and learning, and there's something that the old and young can relate to. The points of health are three elementary schools and one middle school. The elementary schools are Hammond, Hayesville, and Yoshikai Elementary School, and the middle school is Stevens. We chose these points of health because we know these schools, we know quick and easy ways to get to these schools. So, experience when we were making our route. So, at first, it was a little rough, like how all projects start. Our team had a little rough issues, but as the weeks gone by, we smoothed things out, we started working as a team together. And by the end, Karen, our adult supervisor, said that she enjoyed looking for danger zones, and the route was enjoyable.
So, the important part of this project was to make routes for both adults and young kids to go, like, to school to enjoy. It was like, just to find, like, problems in the sidewalks and other stuff, like so says the slides. We believe that your intention of this is for us to find a safe place to walk.
Hi, my name's Crystal.
And I'm Javier.
Today, we're going to talk about our route, which was about 1.89 miles, and was about 45 minutes. The reason why we called it Robo Tree is because our group was walking on Hayesville, and then we saw a tree, and we didn't know if it was fake or not. And it was fake, so that's why we called it that. And our adult also made a quote for us. It was, "I really enjoyed working with Crystal, Emma, Frankie, and Javier. They're a bright and enjoyable group of young people."
We chose this point of health because when parents or guardians take their kids out on walks, kids are able to run freely, and the parents don't have to worry about them running into things that they're not supposed to. We chose this route because everyone in our group was capable of walking the distance. Before our final route, we had a longer walk, but we had to cut the walk, so all of our group members were able to complete the walk.
Our experience with working with the adults was a little bit uncomfortable during the first few weeks, but as the weeks went on, we were, our communication went a lot better, and we were more social with our adult. Why this project is important, because it brings the community together and allows us to have a safe environment for everyone in the community. Because we know that Salem is like a safe place, but we just want to have a better environment for our kids and the adults. Thank you.
I'm Blake.
My name's Joey.
And our route was Mary's Lamb. It was walked by me, Joey Guada, Angela, and our adult, Anne Hoffman.
The walk, this walk is about, is about 3.2 miles round trip. The walk begins at Adam Stevens Middle School, and the turnaround point is Lamb Elementary School. Takes about an hour to an hour and 15 minutes to complete the entire walk. This walk is pretty straightforward and easy, and easy walk. It includes sidewalks the majority of the way, along with some pleasant scenery.
We picked this route because there are sidewalks available most of the time. We chose our point of health because there are many areas that you can do physical activity in.
The importance of the walk. We thought this walk was important because it inspires people to just get up and walk. Even though it wasn't the best destination, the walk was pretty straightforward. This was a very calming and daily walking route.
Our experience. It was a very inspirational type of project, and now I know that no matter how small we may be in society, we can still make a big difference. Our adults said the students were cooperative and pleasant to spend time with during our hailing, rainy, and very sunny days for our walks, and we didn't complain about the conditions.
Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. My name's Daniela, and this is Branda. The name of our group was the Subway Run. The participants of our group were Evan, German, and our adult Judy. We chose this, oh, sorry. The route, the distance of the route back and forth was an hour and 30 minutes, 2.4 miles back and forth. We chose this route because it had a variety of places, such as parks, churches, community gardens, grocery stores, and many points of health. It was also a good distraction for adults and for young people. We had fresh air, and we had an opportunity to look at different places and meet new people. Our points of health were Subway, grocery store, park, community gardens, and Ramier People's Church.
Our experience with working with Judy and my peers was an amazing experience, working together to rearrange and finalize our route, and hear from different perspectives and learn from each other. Teamwork took a big role in this project. From Judy's perspective, she said it was inspiring to work with these energetic and intelligent teens willing to take on more than their typical workload in order to make a meaningful contribution to their world. Our group believes this project is important because we discovered a route from Stevens to Subway that's the safest and fastest way together. It was a great opportunity to work together to, and share different opinions. We create a walk that is walkable for all people with different types of needs. For example, if you're in a wheelchair or have a stroller, it won't prevent you from completing the walk. It's also a good distraction with a nice view and an opportunity to breathe fresh air. Thank you for your time.
So, the next steps are that the maps will be compiled and printed in a Wanderwalks map by chariots and then disseminated through the neighborhoods. And I just wanted to mention a huge thank you to Stevens Middle School and all the partners that were involved in this project, from the Health Department to City of Salem Neighborhoods, Salem Leadership Foundation, OHS Nursing School, and OSU, and Just Walk Salem Kaiser. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you very much. That's very good, very good. We look forward to seeing your map. That'll be really, really interesting. Thank you. Our next presentations from Polk County Sheriff, Mark Garten.
Hello, appreciate the opportunity to get in here, and I'll be brief. I just wanted to touch on a few things that are going on over in Polk County with law enforcement. With our, all our deputies now have Narcan, which is naloxone, it's an opiate overdose reactor. We have all those in our patrol cars now. It's been about three weeks since we've been on with that, so that is something that is new. The other part is, we're currently in our state to revise our Senate Bill 111, which is our Officer Involved Shooting Framework. We have a public hearing on June 29th over in Polk County that anybody is welcome to come. It's at 7:00 at the Board of Commissioners Conference Room, so we can get that updated. The other thing, I want to really give a thanks to the Police Department for helping partner with us for Mobile Crisis. Our Mobile Crisis Response Team is new to our county. We partnered with Salem Police, and we're able to have two teams together to work Polk County, one in West Salem, one for the rest of the county, and then when we're not on, we cover each other's area. And so, we've, we've had about 60 so calls for service since we started that program. About one-third of them are from West Salem inside the city limits, so we're, we definitely, there's enough work to do over there, unfortunately. Those, those calls do take a long time, so 60 calls may not seem like a lot, but those are very time-sensitive calls. The other, one other quick thing, so our interagency drug team is active. We work inside city limits of West Salem, outside of the city limits, and sometimes over, over here, it's just the drugs really don't have a boundary, so we follow that wherever we can go. And we're, we're having some of our highest calls and the amount of numbers that we're taking over there, unfortunately. And it's all essentially around heroin and methamphetamine. Those are the two that we see often enough, and our drug team is, is very busy. So, the other thing, I just wanted to... So the other thing I just wanted to say is if there's anything ever that you guys have questions about, anybody, not just the council, but anybody, you're more than welcome to call and ask or email or however you want to get ahold of me. That's something that I really believe in, is talking to people and understanding their frustrations, their concerns, their compliments. So if anybody ever has any questions, don't feel free, feel free, don't feel free, feel free to, to give me a call and let me know. So if anybody has any questions, that sort of suite, so.
Great. Thank you very much, Sheriff. Are there any questions for the Sheriff? Thank you very much for coming down. Hope to see you again. Okay, it is time for a public comment on issues other than those that are up for public hearing and deliberations. Okay, I have, oh, Ian Johnson.
Hello, my name is Ian Johnson. I'm here to speak to Consent Calendar Item 3.3G Purchase and Sale Agreement with the State of Oregon for property at the former Oregon State Hospital, offering comments on behalf of NESCA for my three minutes of glory here in front of the City Council. So want to take an opportunity to thank everyone for got to this, got us to this point. This is for the park property at the corner of, northwest corner of D and 23rd, and it's been many years to get here. And while it might seem anticlimactic, actually glad to see it on the consent calendar, which implies a certain amount of consensus among council. We've talked about this a lot and it's good to see it come, come to this point. Like to thank both the current mayor and council and former mayor and council. Yes, it's run that long to get us to this point, but also specifically Mayor Bennett, who at the beginning of this process pushed us and asked some uncomfortable, difficult questions which we did not like, but got us to this point. And then all of the city staff who've helped us, Annie Gorski and Kristen Rutherford, really throughout the process, but there's been many city people, and I think mayor and council should be very proud of their staff and the work that they've done. I'd also like to thank Senator Peter Courtney and Representative Brian Clem, who stopped the sale process and allowed this opportunity for this to happen. Following state statute, that property would have been fire sold to the highest bidder. So the fact that we even have this opportunity to purchase this as a park is a direct result of their intervention. We did turn in a letter, so I'm not going to go back over that. It's somewhere in that three inch pile you have on your desk. Good luck finding it. But we did provide it. And we'd like to just simply say that this is an opportunity to put a piece of property to continue its use. You know, it's been an important community gathering place. It continues to be. If you drive there on the weekend, it's full whether it's rain, sun, or shine. So we certainly appreciate this coming up. We would encourage you to go ahead and just pass this along with the consent calendar. Again, it might be a little anticlimactic, but we will have a fiesta later when we go ahead and do that. So although I would not intervene on the prerogative of council if you choose to discuss it, but we're very excited that it's on the consent calendar. We look forward to moving ahead.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Ian, and thank you for all your work as the past, I don't know if you call yourself, called yourself the Chair or the President of NESCA, but.
We have chairs.
Okay. I, I, I want to tell you that this is my ward and I pulled it, so it's not on the consent calendar because I think it's an important enough thing that we ought to look at it on its own and, and pass it that way as a separate standalone thing because of the hard work done by the staff, the neighbors, and everyone else involved to get it to this point where we can now make sure it stays as a city park.
Thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you very much. Carol Snyder.
Good evening. I'm Carol Snyder and I live in Ward 7, and tonight I'm speaking for the Friends of D Street Field. And we simply want to express our gratitude for all the effort that has gone into this proposed agreement between the State of Oregon and the City of Salem for the purchase of D Street Field. So to the city staff, to this council and the last council, to this mayor and the last mayor for all your hard work and persistence, on behalf of rugby players, softball players, frisbee tossers, kite flyers, and all the generally active and playful citizens of Salem who use this wonderful open field in the middle of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph, Joseph Boyd.
Hello, I'm Joseph Boyd. I'm the president of the Salem Rugby Club here in town. I coach Willamette University Rugby Club, and I also coach the local high school boys' club. The, the field on D Street and 23rd is a field that we utilize daily in our community. It's really, really important to us. Our, our club really relies on it for free, open practice space. If it was to be sold off to the highest bidder, which I know we stopped that, it would really, let me put it like this, it would question if we could have a rugby club here in Salem. We are a local nonprofit and we serve the youth here in Salem. I've coached the high school team for the last eight years, and we've utilized that, that field for the last seven. And, you know, I just want to express my support for the city buying it and turning it into a, into a city field. Yeah, I guess that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, does anyone else want to speak on any of these issues? Okay, great. Let's see, Consent Calendar. Counselor McCoy.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar with the following poll. Item 3.3G by Counselor Anderson.
Second by Nanki. Want to run through any of those?
Okay. Take a little while. We go all the way to J on these, so here we go. We've got the minutes of the May 22nd Council Work Session and the May 22nd, 22nd Council Meeting. In the consent calendar under resolutions, we have an item that's vacating a southeasterly portion of Old McClay Road because it is no longer used, needs to be used. There's a new road coming through there that makes it not usable, not needed anymore. We have approval for an increase in fire department fees and charges for pre-hospital emergency and non-emergency medical treatment and ambulance transport services. We have another Public Works fee schedule for a variety of fees that Public Works is involved in. It's basically increased based on the, the cost of living increases or an engineering fees increase level between, somewhere between 2.5 and 3.9%. A transfer of the appropriation authority to replace the cooling system at the Civic Center. We're moving $954,000 from the contingencies to Capital Improvement Fund to pay for the replacement of the cooling center here at the Civic Center, which is 45 years old. Under action items, we are approving a lease for Avis Budget Car Rental for a terminal lease at Salem Municipal Airport. We are amending a lease with Northwest Financial Advisors to extend their current lease until they can move here at the end of the year. There is amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon for the acquisition of real property in the $4,100 block of Fisher Road so that we can build some needed waste facility services. There's amendment to the intergovernmental agreement for the transfer of real property between the City of Salem and Salem Kaiser School District, and we're extending the time for the agreement to be met because some of the work hasn't been completed due to extenuating circumstances. Lease extend, there's a lease extension amendment with Shire's Property LLC to secure the proposed Salem Police Facility site. We leased that site. The lease is, the current lease is up in the end of this month. This will extend that lease until such time as we finish our financial negotiations and purchase the property. We have a reappointment of David W. Hiddle as a municipal judge pro temp. And we have a license agreement with Capital Community Television for real property located at 1700 to 1770 Water Street. This is to house their equipment. We purchased this a while ago. They are using some CCTV type funds. We have a ground lease agreement with BSL Transport. They are going to build a 9,600 square foot hangar for their corporate plane there. And we have an improvement and reimbursement agreement between the City of Salem and Oregon Department of Administrative Services and the Urban Renewal Agency for Infrastructure at Mill Creek Corporate Center. And this is for the reimbursement up to $1.1 million in city public works construction funding for the installation of 3,500 feet of water line between Amesville Highway and the Hennington Cold Storage Site along Coobwood Boulevard in support of the development at the Mill Creek Corporate Center, which you heard about earlier tonight. And that is the consent calendar.
Excellent. Are there, is there any further discussion on this consent calendar? Okay, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we'll move to our public hearings. Start with whichever one of these is first.
The City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding proposed amendments to the Salem Revised Code, SRC, to allow multiple family residential use in publicly owned historic buildings in the public and private health services PH zone. The applicable criteria are SRC 110.085 and the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan Policies, Section 2 and 4, and statewide planning goals 5 and 10.
Staff report then?
Good evening. I'm Brian Colborne. Sorry about that. Yeah, I'm, I'm Brian Colborne. I'm a planner with the Community Development Department, and I'm here this evening to give the staff report for code amendment 1704, which is an amendment to allow multifamily housing in the PH zone. So first, I'd just like to give a little bit of background as to why we're working on this code amendment. The Salem Housing Authority is in the process of acquiring Yaquinta Hall for a project to repurpose the building for 50 new affordable housing units. Yaquinta Hall is one of two structures that are going to be preserved on the north campus of the former Oregon State Hospital property. And this is an exciting project in that it will not only allow for more affordable housing, which is greatly needed in Salem, but also it will be an opportunity to protect and reuse a historic building into the future. So just for reference, this is a map that we have of the, of the north campus showing where Yaquinta Hall is located. It's sort of on the western side of the property, kind of just south of the, of the rugby field that we were just discussing, and north of the dome building. The zoning of Yaquinta, of the north campus property is PH right now, which is Public and Private Health Services is what it stands for. And so that's a zone that actually allows a broad range of health-related services and uses, like hospitals and clinics and other kind of public institutional uses. But unfortunately, it does not allow for residential uses, like multifamily residential. And so the proposed affordable housing in Yaquinta Hall is not a permitted use in the existing zoning. The, the proposed code amendment would amend that PH zone to allow multifamily residential in quite a targeted way. It would allow residential multifamily, but with two limitations. It would have to be owned and managed by a public agency, and it would have to be rehabilitation of a, of a public, historic, historic building. So it wouldn't allow for, you know, newly developed apartment complex under the way it's drafted. We did, we did think about the implications of this kind of citywide. There are other properties that are zoned, PH throughout the city. There's about 1,800 acres of PH zoning throughout the city. Most of this is large state-owned tracts of land that, that have institutions on them. There is the potential that in the future that there could be a historic building that, that might be available for repurposing for housing. However, in our research, looking at what's out there, PH, right now, the only known example that could benefit from this provision would be the Yaquinta property. I did go to the two neighborhood associations that are abutting the north campus property and then in NESCA and, and gave information to those neighborhoods. We didn't receive any comments in opposition to the proposed code change. We just received one comment that expressed no concerns from the transit district. So with that, our staff recommendation is to advance the ordinance to second reading for enactment, and that concludes my presentation.
The only thing missing was, the name of it begins with a Y and ends with a hall. I was pretty close. It was pretty tight. Okay, any, there's no one signed up to testify. Anyone want to testify on this? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you. In regards to the zoning PH.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
We got somebody who wants to talk?
Thank you. Of course I want to talk, but I just won't talk for very long and sorry for missing the sign up sheet. Mayor Bennett, members of the council, both those who I've appeared for in the past and those who I've not yet had an opportunity to appear before, nice to see you all and thanks for this opportunity to give some very brief testimony. This is a code amendment, which is, while code amendments.
Jeff, could you give your name?
Oh, pardon me. Jeff Tross, Land Use Consultant, 1720 Liberty Street, Southeast Salem, 97302, here tonight on behalf of Salem Housing Authority in the matter of this code amendment to the PH zone. And while code amendments are a fairly routine of item, as you see from time to time in your meetings here, this one's a little bit different. It's very narrowly constructed. It has a public purpose and it actually serves two purposes. It provides an expedited means of providing for assisted housing, which as the staff report notes is a critical need in our community, and at the same time, it serves to preserves buildings that are on the historic register. So it has two public benefits. One, to provide critical housing, and the other to preserve structures that are meaningful for the community. And I'd like to say we had some very important and very constructive meetings with Lisa and Brian and, and the planning staff before getting to this point. These were very positive meetings. They helped us to propose an amendment that was very narrow in focus and yet would have maximum benefit. Unfortunately, Brian's staff report was so thorough, it leaves me with very little else to say, and I'll have to talk to him about that another time. So thank you very much for your consideration here, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tross? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Counselor Nanki.
Depending on what happens with the balance of the property, will it ever change zones away from the PH? And will this become potentially moot down the, the road where we could just rezone it for RM?
So DAS, the State of Oregon Department of Administrative Services, is current owner of the whole north campus. They currently have a subdivision application in for review, which divides the, the north campus into some large tracts. One of them is the Yaquinta Hall. Building would be on its separate parcel of land. And the eastern part of, of the north campus would be a large tract. And that's, that eastern part is the part, as I understand it, that would be anticipated for redevelopment and repurposing, and that's what's subject to the RFP process right now. So that probably would be, I would anticipate needing a further zone change in the future or working with the city to, to look at what appropriate zoning would allow that mixed-use community vision, which isn't quite fleshed out yet. The, the fact that Yaquinta is going to be on a separate parcel and that we're going through this code amendment, I don't anticipate that there would be the need to change the zoning on the Yaquinta Hall parcel.
Thanks. Any other questions? Oh, Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you. Just a quick question about the historic, historic designation includes buildings listed in the National Register as contributing resources and also buildings listed in the local, locally designated resources. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Very, Counselor Anderson.
I'm ready to make a motion if that's.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It affects everyone, but it's in my ward.
Yes.
Oh, you have to, have we closed the public hearing?
No.
Okay, well then I won't make a motion. I move we close the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye. Public hearing's closed. Okay, Counselor Anderson, you have a question?
Thank you. I move the advance ordinance number 1117 to a second reading for enactment for the purpose of amending the Salem Revised Code, chapters 543 and 702, to allow. purpose of amending the Salem Revised Code Chapters 543 and 702 to allow multiple family residential uses in publicly owned historic buildings in the Public and Private Health Services Zone.
Second by Cook.
Oh.
Cook, you can take it or—
I will take it, thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, I think the legal term that the mayor and others were looking for is called a "bill of attainder," which one cannot do. A bill of attainder is directed toward a specific person, but I think we've done a good job on this to direct it toward things in general. So this is a terrific thing, and it responds somewhat to a little bit of the questions that were raised by Mr. Wigg and his earlier testimony to earlier meetings, and we need affordable housing, and this is a terrific project, and I support it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, our next public hearing.
The City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding the fiscal year 2017-18 proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds.
Thank you, and briefly again. To receive state revenue sharing funds, the city is required to hold two public hearings. The first public hearing to discuss the possible uses of state revenue sharing funds was held by the Budget Committee on April 12, 2017. This evening's public hearing, which covers the proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds, was noticed in the Statesman Journal on June 2, 2017. The proposed use of state revenue sharing funds, as recommended by the Budget Committee, is an offset to the costs of providing police patrol services. City Council approval of this proposed use is signified by adoption of Resolution 2017-31. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Need a motion? Counsel McCoy?
I move the staff recommend—
And I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, I'll open the hearing. Nobody signed up. I'm going to close the hearing now.
Hit it?
Counsel McCoy, let's go.
I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next public hearing.
The City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding the proposed fiscal year 2017-18 City of Salem budget.
And one more time, just a little bit longer this time. Oregon public budget law requires the Budget Committee to recommend a budget to the City Council, which it did on May 15, 2017. Changes made by the Budget Committee to the City Manager's proposed budget are provided as Attachment 1 to the public hearing staff report. The Budget Committee's fund-level recommended budget appears as Attachment 2 to the staff report. The City Council is required to hold a public hearing on the recommended budget. Notice of this evening's public hearing was published in the Statesman Journal on June 2, 2017. Following the public hearing, staff recommends the City Council deliberate on the recommended budget within the restrictions provided in law, which are: Property taxes cannot be increased from the rate levied by the Budget Committee. No funds expenditures can be increased by more than 10%. Within these restrictions, the City Council may make changes to the recommended budget. Following deliberation of the budget, the City Council is asked to approve any changes to the budget this evening to allow staff to return with a resolution to adopt the budget on June 26, 2017. At that time, staff will ask the City Council to amend the budget, approval made this evening to include any rebudgeted purchase orders or carryover projects from the current fiscal year, which city staff are currently identifying, as well as any other appropriation needs that were not identified during the budget review process but remain within the 10% cap prescribed in budget law. A complete list of items to be included in the fiscal year 2017-18 budget will be provided to the City Council on June 26, 2017. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing then on this fiscal year's budget. We have a substantial number of people signed up to testify. I'm going to call you up to at a time. You have three minutes. Please identify yourself, give us your ward or your address, and when the yellow light goes on, you have one minute left. When that red light goes on, just stop talking, or I will ask you to. Take your pick, because we're going to keep moving along. We need to move through these. We've got to get done before our time's up. Yes, sir?
Mayor, just a point of order, maybe if you could remind, we had some clapping earlier in the meeting on various other issues, and that will really slow this one down. So I'd ask if you request that the members of the public not respond one way or the other after testimony.
Okay. Yeah, that's a really good point. Yeah, please don't clap. Please don't yell, please don't shout, yeah, you can do this, or stuff like that, express whatever, but it does slow things down. So we're going to start with Mitch Teal and Mary Lou Carroll. Yeah. Are you Mary Lou coming down? Okay, and you're Mitch?
I'm Mitch.
Go ahead, Mitch.
With the council's approval, I'd like to alter positions in the speaking tonight.
No, you're on, Mitch.
Okay, I can do that too.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I just got to keep going.
Well, my name's Mitch Teal. My address is 4080 Eagle Crest, I'm West Salem, 97304. I'm here tonight to talk about wanting to make sure that the money that was allocated for the bridge is going to continue to be used towards the bridge over to West Salem. I have a couple of reasons for that. For one, I am in all states of this city every day, doing different things for different businesses. The practicality of getting over and across the bridge several times a day is not a problem until the afternoon hours, and then I have to reschedule my entire day if I have to meet with employees or if I have to have an employee come in for an interview. Everything depends, and everything comes to a halt from about 3:30 to 6:00. Nothing can happen over there. We talked earlier about small businesses and how important it is to help small businesses in this council meeting, and as an owner of several small businesses, and one of them being in West Salem, it's imperative that we get people that are coming through West Salem to come through in a manner and a mood that's not, I've been on the road for an hour and a half and I want to get straight home. They have to pull over, use the services. They can't be afraid to enter West Salem during the morning hours and the afternoon hours, and that's what I see all the time. Again, my productivity is strangled during the day. If I need to go to Kaiser, or if I need to go to South Salem, or I need to go to North Salem, or I need to go to Independence, all of those things I have to think about ahead of time. How can I schedule my day? How can I schedule my meetings? How can I schedule my appointments? How can I pick up my kids? How can I take my kids to their appointments? It puts a bind on my day like you wouldn't believe. So the strangle that it's got on me is incredible. I personally have one of Oregon's most medically fragile daughters. Living in West Salem scares me to death. If my daughter has an emergency, which she's had multiple times, the way to get her to the hospital is blocked two times a day for several hours, and I implore you to do something drastic about it, which would be the third bridge, which isn't drastic, we've talked about it for a long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Teal. Any questions for Mr. Teal? Yeah, Counsel Anderson.
Thank you for coming down and testifying, Mr. Teal. I wonder if you're aware that the budget tonight has no direct expenditures for the proposed bridge at all. That's another complete item. The only work that's being done on the bridge right now is some staff time that's being spent on it. So you understand that we're not, this budget tonight has nothing to do with the bridge.
Well, I would just like to get what I have, you know, my experience and what I have to say about the bridge out there for whatever is possible.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that, but we won't be voting on the bridge tonight, but thank you for coming down.
Well, I appreciate you listening, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou Carroll, followed by Joshua Bach.
I'm Mary Lou Carroll. I live at 4100 Eagle Crest Road, so I'm outside the city limits, but I have a 97304—
He'll give you three minutes anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, it's Salem. Again, mine relates to the bridge, but also it has to do with the monies that were left over from the 2008 bond fund that are supposed to go to Marine Drive, which will be preceding the building of the bridge. So I'm going to read my letter, it purports to that. "The residents of Salem have patiently waited for a third bridge to be built. During this time, the wait and traffic has increased dramatically surrounding the Marion Center Street bridges. As the city approves multiple development projects, the traffic jams have and are increasing at an alarming rate. Businesses who depend upon vehicles to conduct business are spending time increased sitting with their vehicles tied up in traffic. People are late to appointments. Children and staff members are tardy to school. Salem's reputation for a city with ease to negotiate has been tainted. While beautification projects and recreation areas are expanded to include bike trails, bike lanes, and bridges to the former city landfill, the folks paying the bills and traveling through our city are subjected to inefficient traffic patterns and lack of alternative routes. I have followed the progress, or lack thereof, of having another way over the Lamont Bridge, over the Lamont River for over 40 years. I examined the Salem Comprehensive Plan decades ago and saw that the Salem hub that included two bridges to move traffic around and out of the city, both bridges were connected to Doakes Ferry Road in West Salem, one going to Kaiser and the other to South Salem. If our city, county, and state had done what they had planned, we would not be in a traffic jam today. Developers in this upturned economy are developing every available space within the urban growth boundary. Those tax dollars and fees are sorely needed. The repercussions of the increased growth have had tremendous impact on our traffic jams. Our residents are expending valuable time sitting in their vehicles on roads that cannot move the traffic. All traffic in multiple counties is funneled to the two bridges in downtown Salem. When the Wheatland Ferry is closed, those vehicles have to join the crowded Salem roads to cross the river, as the next closest bridge north is Newburgh. We want a way to leave West Salem through the Salem Parkway to I-5—
I'm sorry, your time is, I'm sorry, your time's up. I understand.
Okay.
I know you have more to say. Have you submitted your letter in writing?
Yes, I did.
Okay, we will finish it in writing.
Okay.
Any questions for Ms. Carroll? There we go. Okay, yes.
Mary Lou, thanks for coming down. I just want to clarify, so, because you talked briefly about Marine Drive, you are in favor of Marine Drive?
Yes, I believe that that is the way that we're going to move some traffic around the core area in West Salem and the entrances to the bridge and to 22 and out Wallace Road.
Sure. So by virtue of that, I can kind of logically assume that you're in favor of acquiring the right-of-way for Marine Drive?
Yes, not building the bike trails.
Thank you.
Counsel Lewis.
Yeah, thanks for coming down and testifying. Let me ask the question a little bit simpler. Before us tonight, in the budget, there's $3.6 million to build out, completely build out a portion of Marine Drive. Are you in favor of that, or are you in favor of what will be testified here tonight, another plan which would purchase just the right-of-way?
What I don't want to see is money going to a bike path at this point. I want to see the acquisition of the property and the preparation for the bridges to be built.
Okay, Counsel Hoy.
You've made a couple of references to a bike path, and I'm not sure what you're referring to when you say you're not wanting it to go to a bike path. Is there a bike path that you think is contemplated with that money?
As I'm told, that eventually Marine Drive will have not only a roadway for traffic, but also designated, a designated bike path on it. And I was told that the money, that the 3.8 would go, would eventually, would be building that bike path, that they were going to get that in place first because there was, would be money available there.
Okay.
Why don't we just stipulate, there's a lot of misinformation on both sides.
Okay.
And we'll let people testify to their opinion tonight and move forward. Would that be okay?
We just need to get, we just need to figure this out.
I think that's what you're saying.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carroll. Joshua Bach and John Replinger? Is Joshua, you Joshua, okay. Where's Mr. Replinger? Okay.
Hello, everyone. I live at 2338 Gibson Woods Court Northwest, 97304 Salem, or West Salem here. The reason I'm in front of all you today is because I'd like to talk about Marine Drive, and I would like to see that eventually be built here. Obviously, a bridge has been talked about for a long time, but we'd like to see something done. You guys have done a great job on a lot of different projects that I've seen in the community, and first of all, I want to say thank you all of you for your service, for the community and for everyone. But we really just would like to see this happen, because it is starting to get frustrating for lots of different people and being a safety concern. I know you guys keep hearing it over and over and over again, but that's just something we're really trying to emphasize on actually seeing happen eventually. It was first talked about with Henny Stewart in 1953, so 65 years, that's a long time. I would, you know, after, you know, that's almost three times my age, and now I'm having to deal with that traffic. So it would have been nice that that would have not been an issue, but I guess that's the way we live. So all I'm saying is I would like to see that $3.6 million spent towards, yes, acquiring the right-of-way if that needs to be done, or if we could have, it start to be built, then, you know, whatever is realistic, at least start getting this going. You guys are the ones that are deciding that, so please just, you know, look at that the best way you can, and that's really the comments I have in front of you guys today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Replinger?
John Replinger, and I live at 928 Carter Avenue Northwest. I probably don't have too much to add. I think everyone is pretty aware that we have a need here. I think that I would really strongly suggest city council members to purchase property to move ahead with that. So I think everyone in the room is very much for that, so, thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Brian Claus? Brian?
Renner?
Yeah. Followed by Mike Evans. Both podiums work.
Thank you, everyone. Brian Claus, Ward 8. I've lived in Salem, in this area, essentially my entire life, and as such, I have great pride in our area, and I also believe in this community, I've seen it do great things. And I'm confident that we have leadership in place in this room that can take us beyond the state that we're at now, because we can do better. And I believe that a critical part of that is being addressed tonight, in that we need to have the infrastructure in place and the money to be spent to make sure that this is a wide enough thoroughfare that the eventual building of the bridge will have the, as I've said, the infrastructure at the footings to move forward. The time clearly is now. We have talked and deliberated, and I've never felt compelled to come to a city council meeting my entire life until this moment, and this is a very important issue. It is something that affects the entire region, it is something that we can fund, it is something that is expensive, but it is also very valuable, and that is why we are all here in these green shirts. If this color annoys you, please move forward. You won't have to see it anymore. Thank you.
Mike Evans, Craig Evans?
All right, I'm Mike Evans, Ward 8. I'm here this evening to introduce our Salem Bridge Solutions Group. If you're interested in this bridge, would you stand? So we're here because we need the bridge. So I'm also here to express our position that city council should use the funds from our 2008 bond measure to purchase the right-of-way to Marine Drive and to build as much of it as possible, and that needs to be the 80-foot-wide regional access road version, not the scaled-back local access road that won't actually help us get our bridge built. We want the actual regional access that will get the bridge built. So first, though, Salem Bridge Solutions is really a fast-growing grassroots group of 2,300 people from our community who agree that our community desperately needs another bridge and strongly support the Salem River crossing. We're excited to be here and committed to helping our community finally get a bridge built after well over 30 years of talking and studying and debating. At the Strategic Planning Open House on Thursday, June 1, we provided you with a list of people who have signed our petition. That list currently stands at 1,712 signatures, and it's growing rapidly. That list currently stands at 1,712 signatures, and it's growing rapidly. Our group is about solutions, it's about progress, it's about solving problems and partnering with our political leaders to find a way to get the bridge built. We believe we can and must build the critical infrastructure that we need now and that our future residents will need as they settle in Salem and raise their families. As the city's recent Situation Assessment Report observed, Salem's population is expected to grow by 7.5 percent over the next five years. They go on to state, the city is at a critical decision point. Growth forecasts suggest the city will continue to add residents and jobs, but the city does not have the infrastructure capacity to support that growth. The city must make a decision about it and will, to accommodate this growth. We're in full agreement with the report's assessment that the city needs to make this decision, and we know that it needs to build the bridge for us to thrive. Salem can, is a can-do city. When we needed a police station, we passed a bond, and we're going to build it. When we outgrew the water treatment facility, we raised money and we expanded it. We've long passed the reasonable capacity of our current bridge to support the ever-increasing traffic burdens, and it's certainly time to build it now.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Evans?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mike, for coming down.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you the same question I asked a couple people ago. You're in favor of Marine Drive?
Absolutely.
All right, that's what I thought. And you're also in favor of acquiring the right-of-way for Marine Drive?
I'm in favor of acquiring the substantially bigger right-of-way than the sixty-foot one that now, that the West Salem, yeah, we need, we need to be able, if we're going to build a, you know, a connection to the bridge, we have to be able to get enough people through that.
So, my question is, thinking about just right now, in our current context this year, would you prefer money be used right now to construct that sixty-foot-wide piece of Marine Drive, or to use that money to finish acquiring the rest of the right-of-way for Marine Drive?
I think we need to acquire all of the right-of-ways so that we can actually get to our future bridge.
Okay, thank you.
My turn?
Yes, Craig.
Hi, this, I'm Craig Evans.
Craig, let me call up Phil Gersner, too.
Good evening. I'm Craig Evans. I live in Ward Eight, and I'm also with Salem Bridge Solutions, and I would just want to expand a little bit on some of the things that Mike had to say. First, we are here to help. We're committed to making our community a better place and helping bring about the changes that we need to make it safer, environmentally responsible, and livable community. To us, that means we need to get another bridge built. Currently, we have a significant daily public safety concern with our bridge congestion. Anyone suffering a serious medical emergency that's caught on the west side of the river is at risk of not having access to Salem Hospital's trauma center, and that's just a daily issue with the gridlock that we experience. When the Cascadia earthquake happens, which everybody keeps telling us is going to happen and is overdue, it's almost certain that Polk County and nearly 20% of the residents of Salem are going to be cut off from virtually all, we have one active fire station, as I understand it, on that side of the river, not much equipment. So, we know that Salem is a caring community that doesn't just discount people because some live on this side and some live on that side. We're an inclusive community, and I know that we can do better than this, and that we can support the needs of all of our citizens, and that's what we're asking for. We also, we do have, we have environmental concerns about this. When we impose this situation on people, we have thousands of cars idling on a daily basis, stranded, just stuck there, doing nothing but spending time, wasting fuel, wasting time, turning out tons of CO2 into the atmosphere that can't be good for us, that the people who live and work along those roadways that are congested like that can't get away from it, and most, a lot of the people that actually live in those communities are the poor, and so it's just not, it's just not an equitable issue for them. We're very concerned with this, the proposed changes that did, we saw in the report, came out of the West Salem Neighborhood Association requesting that the S-9 project would be removed from the SCAT Transportation Improvement Program list. After the city has spent countless hours and dozens of public meetings to craft the current Salem River crossing plans, having a small special interest group of twenty people meet and how, on a twelve-to-eight vote, decide that we should supersede the will of the general public that's been looking at this issue for decades is not a palatable situation. The proposal represents the interests of those who want to stop the bridge and scale down this Marine Drive. We don't want that to happen. We want the full-scale improvements.
Are there any questions for Mr. Evans? Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say you and your brother look very much alike, so. And we, and we talk quite a bit at the open house, so I just want to ask you the same questions. I'm assuming you guys are on the same page, but you never know. Support Marine Drive, I'm assuming?
Oh, of course.
And if you had the choice of constructing a sixty-foot, small section of Marine Drive right now, or acquiring the rest of the right-of-way for Marine Drive, what is your preference?
I think we need to be pursuing all of that, but if I, if I said...
Within the limits of what we're doing this year, because that's what we're voting on.
So, the stuff that we're doing now, I would say we should stick with the plan that's in place, rather than deviate from the plan. The infrastructure that could be built now at the full width, that would actually serve the communities that, where there are people living now, that would actually access those, versus acquiring right-of-way that goes out into the countryside, into undeveloped areas for the purpose of allowing for other trails and whatever, that's all good. I mean, we're going to need it at some point, but we, my understanding is that we have a project in place, ready to go, where we can build streets that will actually support people who currently live there and help alleviate a little bit of the traffic concerns now. That's my understanding. So, I would prefer, I would prefer to build what is on schedule to build right now.
I could follow up.
Yeah.
So, I just want to make sure that we have the same understanding. The section of Marine Drive that is being proposed to be built is between Cameo and Taven. I'm sorry, Glen Creek. And it's about a three-block section, and essentially, if you've been back in Cameo and Glen Creek, it essentially would do a little loop. It doesn't connect to anything else besides that area.
It starts the process and commits us to the process.
Okay, so, I just want, that's, I just, yeah, and I just...
That's my, that's my view, but I think, I think, I think as we, as we dig into the details, you know, my, maybe, maybe I'm misreading things. Maybe I've misread some things.
This is why I want the clarification. So, what you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is you would prefer that that about three-block section of Marine Drive be constructed and not acquire additional right-of-way for Marine Drive?
If we had to choose one or the other, yes, that would be my preference, so that we continue this process moving forward as it was contemplated, and, you know, the proposals I've seen ask for us to scale it down, scale down the right-of-way from an eighty-foot right-of-way to a sixty-foot right-of-way.
What's being proposed as a sixty-foot right-of-way to be constructed?
Well, that's...
And that's the plan. That is in the plan and in the budget.
Well, in the documentation that I've looked at, and maybe we can talk offline later, but I see, I see documentation that shows an eighty-foot right-of-way that's proposed, not sixty. Maybe Peter knows more about the details on that.
We can...
Clarify if I've got that wrong. That's what I've seen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else got questions for Mr. Evans? Martina Sierra, you're after Mr. Gersner.
Very good. Not very many people get that name right. My name's Phil Gersner. Actually, I'm an Outlander. I live in Kaiser, but I own property and a business in West Salem at 110 Wallace Road. Just like to express my appreciation for having the open forum. I've never been to a city council meeting before, very interesting tonight, but this, the steps preceding an eventual development of the bridge are very near and dear to my heart. I go across the bridge two to eight times a day. A lot of my clients go across the bridge, and the time is now. There's quite a few people that, this issue seems to be more important than many other issues, more important than the homeless, which is obviously a very compassionate issue we need to care about, even maybe more so than the cop shop. This issue is a very, very big issue and near and dear to a lot of folks' hearts, and I'd just like to support the idea that we move forward with that. I'm not sure, Counselor, if, if the sixty or the eighty-foot easement, which one propels us forward in the best position to finish up the bridge, but I'm not knowledgeable enough to answer that question, but whichever one we think would help us with that, that process is the one I would be standing behind. That's all I had for comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Martina Sierra, followed by Tim Clark.
Hi, my name's Martina Sierra. I live at 295 Taven Road Northwest, Salem, 97304. I'm here tonight to express my strong opposition to the proposed building of Marine Drive behind Pioneer Village where Karakaser stated it would be built. This is simply a bad idea, and will create traffic in a quiet neighborhood with no real benefit to the drivers, as it does not come out to the services where they might need to go or located. Pioneer Village is currently located in a quiet, relatively crime-free area. With the proposed encroachment of Marine Drive on the back of the complex, the security and peace would be destroyed. The neighborhood is one of the reasons I and many of the people there chose to live at Pioneer Village when there are other options for subsidized housing in the city. We are old and have a variety of disabilities in this community. Taking away our security for a road that simply will not meet all of the needs is not acceptable. Additionally, the nightmare that the construction would cause along Taven Road would be massive, as well as along, between Cameo and where Taven Road goes. It would be limited access to the apartments along Taven Road, parking problems as well. This is untenable. Some of us have trouble getting to and from our cars, and this, as it is, as it is for a variety of reasons, physical and emotional. I now have to gear myself up to make it to my car not fifty feet from my front door, as an example, and getting groceries into the house is extremely difficult. There are many for whom this would not, for whom this would be an even bigger challenge. To further distance, to further distance to make it to our apartments would mean that it's just that much more impossible, along with the noise and construction mess. We are a community of senior and disabled people. Do not make it more difficult for us to live in relative comfort and security. Please use the alternative Fifth Avenue proposal, which makes more sense in terms of putting the traffic where it needs to come out and does not encroach on Pioneer Village, and does not create, create the headaches during the months of construction. It's unconscionable to me that you would even think that the proposed placement of Marine Drive is a viable option. There are so many things wrong with this idea. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you for coming down, Ms. Sierra. So, you live in Pioneer Park right now. Let's say you wanted to go north on Wallace Road. Would you drive east to the proposed construction of Marine Drive in order to go north on Wallace Road?
No.
Let's say you wanted to go south on Wallace Road. Would you drive east so you could get on this three-block segment of proposed Marine Drive in order to go south on Wallace Road?
No.
Well, let's say you wanted to go west of Wallace Road. Would you drive east to the three-block segment of Marine Drive in order to go west on Salem, on Wallace Road?
No.
Thank you.
So, is that our Perry Mason moment?
Yeah.
The first one.
I just have one question. If Marine Drive were built out based on the twenty-year-old transportation plan, can you explain to me how that would increase crime in your neighborhood, as you stated?
I believe that increasing the traffic along where it is proposed to be built would increase, foot traffic would increase the ability to reach into and approach that community and increase the level of crime, therefore, as a result.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you very much. Nathan, you'll be up behind Tim here.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and City Council. I kind of stand here a little bit with a history of, oh, I'm sorry, Tim Clark, 2763 Weatherford Court, Northwest Salem, Oregon. Now it's official. Okay, anyway, we're talking about a budget item where you have money earmarked towards Marine Drive, basically what we're talking about. I recommend that you keep that in the budget and use it wisely for the expansion of Marine Drive, okay? A little bit of history, back in 2003, or prior to that, there was a lot of discussion. There was a steering committee which I was on, and we talked about the West Salem Neighborhood Plan, and a lot of things were happening at that time. The high school just got built, 2002. One of the items that came from council to the Neighborhood Association was a request to designate 130 acres of multifamily resident housing that was put on your guys' shoulder, and then with city council was felt that West Salem needed to do its part, because Lancaster was doing a lot of it, and South Salem was doing a lot of it, and now, at that time, it was felt that West Salem needs to step up to the plate and cover that. So, in that neighborhood plan, it was a discussion of that, and what came about is a great majority of area to be designated for that is from 711 out to Riverbend Road to the east side. It's a large chunk of land, a lot of multifamily residential housing was going to be put in there. And one of the big concerns, again, one of the things that was happening at that, was Wallace Road got expanded to, from two lanes to four lanes, and the concern was making the left-hand turn out of all those apartment complexes safely onto Wallace Road, okay? So, the discussion came up, is how do we get them to move back towards town safely? And the idea was Marine Drive came into effect, and that would connect down to Glen Creek, and then at that time, the people would turn on Glen Creek, use a light of Glen Creek and Wallace Road, turn left, and move on down into the downtown area, so, if not, the shopping centers, onto Edgewater or Wallace. So, that was the idea behind Marine Drive that actually came out of this whole thing. And so, I just wanted to bring light to that of the idea where that came from. I would recommend, highly recommend you keep that in the budget and use it in a wisely manner. We have the opportunity to look forward to having a third bridge.
I'd like to come on. I'm here for questions. Any questions for Mr. Clark? Great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for recalling that. Nathan? And following Nathan will be Ron McNinch.
Thanks, Mayor Bennett and City Council. Nathan Orch, 2471 Cherry Blossom Drive. It was interesting to hear about Henny Stewart in 1953, the gentleman that brought that up earlier, because my grandfather was talking about this in the 50s as well. My father, in '86, talked about it when Wallace Marine Park was actually developed, developed with the softball fields. It's 2017 I'm talking about it. I've got a fourteen-year-old and a nineteen-year-old, both boys. I don't want it to be 2045 and come full circle, and we have the same conversation all over again, and instead, they're talking about it with their kids. In 1993, traffic counts at Edgewater were at 27,000. Going out to Michigan City Lane, traffic counts were about 6,800, not, a huge decrease after Michigan City Lane. In 2000, sorry, in 1997, there was a local access and circulation study. It identified the need for a collector street. It identified the need for a collector street. Whether you call that a street, whether you call it a collector, whether it's a minor arterial, major arterial, 40, 60, 80-foot, something has to be done to get people north and southbound on a proposed Marine Drive. Take the right-of-way, get it purchased now, so that people can move between Riverbend and Glen Creek. If I want to go over the bridge, I'll use Wallace. If I want to go down to Roth's, I'm going to use Marine Drive. Let Wallace be that main thoroughfare. Eventually, we'll get to the bridge portion, and I know that's not the focus, but build Marine Drive now. Purchase the right-of-way. Adding three blocks doesn't make sense at this point in time. Purchase the property that's necessary to build the three-mile stretch that's there. In 2005, the traffic counts went from 27,000 in '93 to 40,000, and increased to Michigan City Lane at 8,700. In 2015, it was at 44,000. Granted, only a 4,000 increase in 10 years, but you also got to remember what happened with the economy and the housing. Housing stopped in 2008. We didn't start to recover until 2012, and it's just continuing to grow. So use the money now, get the right-of-way, and let's move forward.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. McNinch, you're followed by Mark Wig.
Good evening. I'm Ron McNinch, 2466 Christina Street Northwest in Ward Eight. I've submitted some written testimony, so I'm not going to go on and on. I just want to encourage you, as someone who's been in Salem for 40 years and 20 years in West Salem, to, in your budget deliberations, please make the bridge your priority. You know, a good simile for the bridge situation is Russian roulette, except we've been playing earthquake roulette, just waiting for, you know, we hope it doesn't happen. But please, get the bridge built. And it's also good, wise, too, get our current bridges reinforced up to earthquake standards. I mean, if the current bridges go down in a big earthquake, and we do have another bridge, we're still back to jammed-up traffic where the, you know, the, I got a dear friend, Michelle McNall, she was coming back from the beach, traffic was jammed up, the ambulance behind her could not get through. It just happens. So please make that a priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Wig, you're followed by Don Thomas.
Thank you, Mark Wig, 1950 Saginaw Street South. And I just want to say how much I like Salem. It's respectful, they listen to people, people disagree, but it's a, this is what a public forum is all about. And I just, I appreciate the people that are here. Anyway, so what I want to talk about is what can be done. And the bond issue passed in 2008, and what was on that bond issue was right-of-way purchases for new river bridge and/or Marine Drive. It doesn't talk about construction. I don't think you can construct anything. It limits you to the right-of-way purchases. So now you've got $3.6 million, and you have, you should have been purchasing this right-of-way a long time ago, but you have the chance now to buy the right-of-way. Buy the right-of-way. And if you buy the right-of-way all the way out to Brush College Road, you have a chance, and I've seen it in Salem, the public here, we have volunteers that show up for a lot of things. And if you've seen the planting at Minto or the planting at Eola Bend Park, or even in your local parks, you see volunteers show up and pitch in and get things done. If the right-of-way is purchased, we will build a trail that can bring people into town. We don't have the money to pave it, we don't have the money to construct it, and we don't have the direction and the permission to even construct it. Now, people have said you can't buy right-of-way outside the urban growth boundary. That is an error. You can do it if you're doing it, in this case, for Marine Drive. It's allowed under the transportation planning rule. I sent you guys the links to those and the exact wording of the transportation planning rule. You can do it. So you can buy right-of-way all the way out to College, Brush College Road. And what I see is when you're at Brush College Road, you can look over and you can see Salem Town. And the people in Salem Town, when their grandkids come, they can have a safe place. They can hop on a bike and get into the Roth's, into the West Salem community, into downtown Riverfront Park. It can be a wonderful thing for those people. They aren't going to bring grandkids out onto Wallace Road. You don't want your kids biking on Wallace Road when cars are going by at 50 miles an hour. Buy the right-of-way. The city will pitch in, and we will build that trail. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Wig, I have a question, just, I'm just curious, because Ms. Carroll asked about a bike trail. I'm hearing bike trail. Am I missing something here? Where this, are you the source of the bike trail being built that had others?
I would, I will be there working on it. What we have is we have a great city staff, we have a great city staff that is willing to help the neighbors pitch in and do these kind of things. I've worked on several projects where we've built trails, and the public work staff and the park staff and those kind of people, they help supply the tools and those kind of things. And you can build trails for really-
Yeah, the point is, Mr. Wig, I want to just make sure I understand, because I think I had received email, and Ms. Carroll testified to it, and was questioned about it by counselors, there is a bike trail planned.
It's, well, that's the nice thing. It is in the plan.
I'm not complaining, I'm just saying there is. I thought you was questioned about it.
It is.
Kind unfairly. I want to make sure it's clear. There is a bike trail planned.
There's a multi-use plan path, a long Minto Drive, it's Marine Drive, it's part of that plan for Marine Drive is to have a separate and multi-use path. The right-of-way purchase is very compatible with the bridge, you know, it's all part of the bridge plan, but it can be a standalone thing and have independent utility, and you can do it.
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much. Did you have a question for Mr. Wig? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. I just want to make sure that we're all kind of clear. In the transportation system plan, it's, we plan for Marine Drive, we want to acquire the right-of-way. And in that transportation system plan, there is also this option or alternative that while we're waiting to secure money to actually construct Marine Drive, the actual vehicle facility, that it could be turned into a soft path, a bike pedestrian path. But that would be temporary until Marine Drive is constructed. Is that correct? Is that your understanding?
Yeah, that's, what I see is, we don't have the money. We don't have a bond issue up to build Marine Drive. It's $30 million or something, or more or less than that. And so we don't have that. What do we have the money for? $3.6 million to buy right-of-way. Let's buy the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Good. So there is a bike trail being planned. Okay. That's all I want to understand. I thought it was kind of poo-pooed with Ms. Carroll, and I thought that was kind of unfair.
I think it's important, I think it's important to clarify, though, the-
Well, I think it's clarified now.
The ultimate, Mr. Wig was saying the ultimate goal was to construct it.
Thanks. So, Mark, let's say you build the path on the right-of-way, and then we find the money to build the road. You're not going to be coming in and saying, "Oh, no, no road, we just wanted that to be a bike path."
No, because the profile of the road includes a separated multi-use path, which would be paved, which would be even better for everybody.
So your bike path, when the funds for the roads come in, your bike path will be something separate than the road, which will also be there.
The bike path, yeah, the soft path goes away, new high path comes in.
Right. Thank you.
Hence a bike path. Okay. Good. I just wanted to get that clear. Luanne Smalley, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Lewis.
Thanks, Mark, for coming down. A couple of questions. One, I just wanted to make sure that your request is for the city to spend the $3.6 million on right-of-way purchase, period?
That's it.
And that you feel as though there's enough volunteers in the area that would build that soft path as we wait?
Absolutely.
The other question I have, and I was a little confused by this, I think you mentioned that we don't currently have permission to build out any of Marine Drive?
You would, but this money is restricted to right-of-way purchases.
And how do you, where does that come from?
The bond issue. When you do a bond, you specify what the bond can be used for. What the bond said is this will buy right-of-way. It doesn't say construct, it just says buy right-of-way.
Okay. Are we restricted by the verbiage on the bond itself, or do we have the right to use supplemental information, like what we want to do with it, the plan for the money? That takes up a little bit more words. Are we barred from doing anything other than what is on the ballot measure itself?
Ah, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think we're done.
Thanks.
Thank you. Luanne Smalley and Brian Bowles. Go ahead, Luanne. Sit.
Oh, Don Thomas.
Oh, Don Thomas. Oh, Don, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're up.
Okay. I live at 292 Calco. And I just want you to know, if you go Marine Drive, how many people that have lived there and have lived there for years will be disabled, will be thrown out. If you think of all those people that have lived there for, there's one, there's a lady that's 101, she would be moved out. That's been her home forever. And the other people that are disabled, there are not that many people, places for disabled people to live. And you need to think of those people and the way they would be thrown out. I just want you to think of the people that live there.
At Pioneer Village, you're, yeah, great. Okay.
There is, I mean, there's not that lot, that many people that live, that would be, there's a lot of people that would be thrown out, and the construction and all the hassle of that, and the, for people that are disabled and senior citizens that live there, you need to think of them, please.
Thank you very much. Luanne Smalley. She had to go. Okay. Thank you. Brian Bowles followed by Evan Source.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me be here to speak. I'm here to bring attention to the bridge. I know, again, that it's not necessarily, oh, and my name is Brian Bowles. I live on 1659 Canard Street Northwest in Ward Eight. All right. So I would like to bring attention to the need for a third bridge across the Willamette River. I don't feel like we need to be here going, "Well, if you're for a third bridge, you're against the environment, blah, blah." This is very important to me, this is very important to many of us who sit in traffic. We don't have the luxury of just riding our bikes or walking every day. Again, I love the environment, but that's not an option for me, and that's not an option for many of my family members and friends. A third bridge is necessary, and I would like for, if it's not a priority this year, to as soon as possible start buying right-of-ways that haven't been bought yet to build a third bridge across the Willamette. This bridge should include, again, we shouldn't have to choose between riding a bike, walking, or driving. This bridge should have lanes for traffic, for automobile traffic, it should have a way for bikers to get across safely, and it should have a path for pedestrians. There's no reason we can't have all of the above. A related topic to the bridge, which, again, I don't want more studies done, we've studied it plenty of times, we know the impact on the fish is very minimal, we know that despite the challenges with the topography, it can be done. I've been to Disney World, it's built in a swamp, and it's doing excellent. All right? So I know that in the 21st century, with the engineers that we have and the materials that we have available, we can build a bridge across our swampy topography. And again, I know the impact on the fish will be minimal, which I also want to point out, I hear people who are in opposition to the third bridge, they say, "Well, it's going, we need to, we should focus more on just reinforcing the current bridges." And I want to remind people that that reinforcing them, that process would also disrupt the fish. All right? Moving on, the urban growth boundary is going to continue to expand, whether we like it or not, it should. We should continue to build both homes, single-family homes and multifamily units. There's thousands of youth who are students in Salem Kaiser right now and who live outside the city, who their dream is to own a home, and without home comes a car, whether it's electric, hybrid, or gas-powered. And with electric cars, the future of getting around here in the West Coast is the automobile. And my source for that is reality. I see every day people driving cars, and who are we to deny the youth, all right, their right or privilege, it is a privilege, to own a home and drive a vehicle? There's something to be said about having your own house where you can grow your own fruit, your own veggies, barbecue, and host people. So please build this bridge and make it a top, a top priority ASAP.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions? Evan Source.
Thank you. Mayor Bennett, Council President McCoy, and honorable members of the Salem City Council. For the record, my name is Evan Source, and I have the privilege of being one of the co-chairs of the West Salem Neighborhood Association. Unfortunately, our other co-chair, Steve Anderson, had a prior engagement and was unable to make it tonight. We speak, we speak together often and have agreed to this language and testimony. In its most basic form, Marine Drive is a street parallel east of Wallace Road Northwest. It was adopted into the Salem Transportation Systems Plan by the City Council in 1997 as a local access road to a busier traffic thoroughfare and remained unchanged until an amendment to include access to the preferred Salem alternative was passed in December of 2016. To reiterate, Marine Drive has been part of the city's, Salem's Transportation Systems Plan for over 20 years, and only one-third of the proposed route is even publicly owned. Currently, within the proposed city budget for the next fiscal year, the city proposes to use roughly $3.6 million from the 2008 Streets and Bonds, Bridges Bond, to pave a three-block section, roughly only 1,200 feet, of Marine Drive between Glen Creek Road and Cameo. The West Salem Neighborhood Association had some concerns with this proposal and do not believe it's the most effective way to use our limited funds. The West Salem Neighborhood Association voted in its April 3 meeting to recommend the budget, the city redirect that money from funding project number 711503, which would construct that three-block part of Marine Drive, and redirect it to project number 61463 to purchase right-of-way and begin construction of Marine Drive from Fifth Avenue to Harret Drive. This would connect all streets east of Wallace Road and allow construction of Marine Drive from Fifth Avenue to Harret. There was a rather informative article in the West Side Newspaper, which is the West Salem newspaper, for all of you who don't live in West Salem, in May, that listed many of the advantages of this idea. I will quickly address some of them, because other speakers will talk in more detail. One, this proposal will be a better use of available funds. Half of $3.6 million could be used for the purchase of right-of-way. Two, the new street will be useful immediately as a connector for the many residents north of Pioneer Village to the town center, where there's a store, a medical center, a post office, a library, and other businesses. Three, the Neighborhood Association recommendation eliminates considerable impact on Wallace Marine Park and the wooded riparian area on its west edge, a subject that concerns many residents that I speak to. Four, the Neighborhood Association recommendation reduces the impact on Pioneer Village, which we've heard earlier in proposals. At least 16 residents will be at risk for the current proposal and one maintenance shelter. So housing, when we're talking about how we need more housing, the current proposal will take away housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, are there any questions? Okay. Nope.
So just a quick question, Evan. How many people are normally at the Neighborhood Association meetings?
Councilman Cook, thank you for the question. Usually, it's between 20 to 25. I actually, I want to take me, the accusation of me being a special interest as a compliment. That means I think we're getting things done. I understand there's a lot of emotion and energy about building a third bridge. What we've been talking about and what we've been focusing about is Marine Drive and the development there, and how that will help answer some of these traffic problems in West Salem, which, when we talk to people, we hear that traffic is an issue, and this is what we've been working on.
House Senator Nagy.
Thanks for coming down, Evan.
Yeah, thank you.
A lot of the rationale for doing one versus the other is impacts of construction and area impacts as well. If in 10 years we go out for a bond and get all the money, all of those things will still happen, just 10 years later, correct?
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So Evan, just to follow up with the Neighborhood Association- So, Evan, uh, just to follow up with the Neighborhood Association, it sounds like you and your co-chair are not always in agreement.
No.
But in this particular case, you are.
Correct.
And then you also had mentioned, um, earlier, the official stance of the Neighborhood Association is neutral in regards to the bridge.
Can I elaborate a little more on that?
Please.
Because this has been a point of contention in our community, so I want to reiterate what the role of the West Salem Neighborhood Association chair does. My job and Steve's job is to provide information to our association and then facilitate the meeting. The association, the neighbors who come to our meetings are the ones who make the decision. I can't, um, I can only help advocate individuals and residents who come to our meetings and tell us what their concerns are. So, currently, we're neutral because our association has wanted to stay neutral.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Lewis.
Um, thanks Evan for coming down.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time and Steve's, um, and I know this is a very interesting time in the Neighborhood Association. A couple of things from your testimony, um, one, I don't, I don't hear you objecting to what is in the current City of Salem Transportation Plan, which includes a, a street called, um, Marine Drive. Thank you. But that, that street starts at Glen Creek and goes north to River Bend Road. So, I'm not hearing an objection to that. I, I did hear you say, and we've seen, um, we've seen a lot of emails, not a lot, we've seen emails from folks that would be, um, possibly disrupted by the construction of the road from Glen Creek to Cameo. My question is, is that sensitivity going to get any better as we move along?
Well, I would say probably not, but what I would say is, um, we've heard from a lot of people in green shirts and not green shirts that Marine Drive is a priority. We've heard that we want to spend the most, or we want to spend our money efficiently and effectively, and we've heard that we want to develop the most, the biggest part of Marine Drive possible. And in my vision, in my opinion, and in the opinion of the West Salem Neighborhood Association, that is this alternative plan. We're going to be able to buy some right-of-way. I didn't get to finish my testimony, I apologize. I thought the Neighborhood Association was going to get a little more time, um, so I would have argued a little more about why, but, um, we would be able to buy some right-of-way and be able to construct now, which would be able to relieve some of that traffic on Wallace Road.
And if I could, when you say construct now, are you talking about these street improvements or are you talking about a pedestrian bicycle path?
I'm talking about street improvements.
Okay. Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm hearing that there is not an objection to the current transportation plan that includes, uh, the road from Glen Creek to River Bend. If there was money, and let's say we had the money to purchase the right-of-way, um, does the Neighborhood Association then have a problem with starting the construction from Glen Creek North?
Uh, I don't believe so, although we haven't voted on that, so I don't necessarily feel comfortable speaking on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. But what I will say is, um, we've always supported the idea of developing parts of Marine Drive and in part for more development in West Salem and more development of businesses in West Salem. We understand that the traffic problem is a barrier to economic development in West Salem, and we want to help solve that problem. And we strongly believe that this alternative proposal will help solve that problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Just one more quick question here. Just so I'm clear, the West Salem Neighborhood Association, the priority for Marine Drive would be to acquire right-of-way first.
Correct.
And then start construction.
Correct. So there was, um, the city of Salem estimated, and I can't remember, it's in my notes somewhere, that it would be approximately like 1.6, 1.8 million dollars to buy the remaining right-of-way, and then we could start developing. So we want to buy that right-of-way first, and then we want to start developing Marine Drive immediately to help relieve some of that traffic in, on Wallace Road for those local access materials to get people from north of Pioneer Village into where Roth's, where the courthouse fitness is, where the library is, where the post office is. Thank you. Any more questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Herb Shaw then Linda Byerly.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Herb Shaw. I'm a resident of Ward Eight and a prop, and a business owner in Ward One. I have over 50 years of experience in highway, uh, bridge, light rail, design and construction industry, and I'm owner of Herb Shaw Consulting, a construction consulting business in Oregon. I am in favor of Marine Drive, but I am opposed to the proposed three-block, three-block, uh, project that's being, uh, proposed for construction, mainly because it's not only adversely affect Pioneer Village, Glen Creek and, and the Wallace Marine Park. But I just think it's, I, what it is, I think it's actually, it's, it's a precursor to construction of the third bridge, which I'm very much opposed. Let me tell you why. The question is, my question to the council is, what evidence do we have that the Salem Alternative Third Bridge proposal even addresses the issues that we're all facing today and in the future? Yes, we need another crossing, but you would think that the current proposal would be based on a survey revealing the rid, origin and destination of vehicles crossing the existing bridges. Uh, when I discussed this with city staff, I was told that there was a study of traffic counts, not a survey, but a study of traffic counts, which is limited, I'll advise you, was made many years ago, it is not representative of the conditions today, and there's not a plan to conduct a survey at this time. My question to you is, does not that concern you? We are proposing to spend 430 million dollars on a project that we don't even know if it's going to work. I want you, want that to sink in. I submit to you that the city should not be leading the plan to construct another river crossing. My experience tells me that, that we have more than enough infrastructure to handle local traffic as well as tourists that would be visiting our city, but we cannot handle the regional traffic that comes, that needs access to and from Interstate Five. By regional traffic, I mean, I'm referring to commerce and certain motorists that have, that should not be funneled into the downtown Salem area because Salem is not their destination. I submit that the regional traffic, uh, regional traffic is a problem that ODOT should be addressing, and that the city and county officials should be making ODOT do their work, their due diligence. Not only will the city Salem alternative totally change the look of West Salem, but it said to, it, in, in your own documents, that it will adversely affect and displace 50 businesses on Edgewater. I don't think that's what we want. Through traffic on, or, ODOT is controlling what you guys have proposed a bill because they want the region traffic to take care of Oregon 220, or 221 and Oregon 22. Does that make sense to you? I say no, because the resolution.
Mr. Shaw, your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thanks a lot.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and City Councilors. My name is Linda Beerly, I reside in Ward Eight. Uh, the Salem Transportation System Plan stipulates that, quote, "An alternative alignment that extends Fifth Avenue Northwest northward along the UGB should be built if there are difficulties in constructing the preferred eastern alignment along Wallace Marine Park", unquote. There are difficulties. The eastern alignment along Wallace Marine Park results in tree loss, habitat loss, and significant impacts to air and water quality. I can go into great detail, but here is the bottom line. A place that has a retirement community, a stream, a backwater channel of the Willamette River and Wallace Marine Park, all in very close proximity, is not a good location for a road. It has to be shoehorned into a very small space, and either Pioneer Village or the creek or the park or all three have to give. This is not necessary. There is an alternative. Fifth Avenue already exists from Taven to Cameo. It does not have to be constructed. The alignment provides a shorter and more direct route to Marine Drive. By using the Fifth Avenue route, you will save money, you'll provide a safe alternative to Wallace Road, and you spare Pioneer Village. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilor Lewis.
Two questions if I could, thanks Linda for coming. Currently, when you head north on Fifth Avenue, to, to start a connection, a continuation, you, you would have to go through at least one house and maybe two, is that correct?
I believe one house.
One house?
No, I'm, I'm not the traffic engineer.
Okay, uh, well, you know how greedy they are. Just joking. But, but there would have to be displacement there with that plan. The, uh, the second question, and I'm, I'm becoming confused because as a member of the West Salem Neighborhood Association, as a secretary, do you agree with what the co-chair just said, that if all of the purchase was done, the right-of-way purchase, it was logical to start the construction at Glen Creek moving north? Would you agree with that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Anderson, did you have something to say?
Yes, thank you. I heard the testimony of Mr. Source, and what he said is the construction from Glen Creek to the, uh, the northern end should be completed. He didn't say starting at Glen Creek, did he? Or did I mishear him?
I don't think he, I don't think he said that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I remain a mystery. Uh, Kathy, you're up. Sorry about the delay on that one, that's, that was too bad.
Well, I went from first to last.
I know, I know, I feel bad about this.
Kathy Sykes, 273 Calico Street Northwest. Give you an idea of where I live. In fact, I am the only person in the room that is directly affected by this. This is a flyer put out. This is my apartment right here. I will be looking straight in the face of anything that's done back there. What's been upsetting me is the opinions tonight, I don't feel they have all the facts. I invite people, including our councilmen, to drive down to our complex. Come down Taven Street, come down the back road, see what our apartment complex is. It's not out in the woods. And, now I lost my train of thought here. We are HUD property for low-income seniors, it's already been explained. To make this three-block little thing that doesn't go anywhere, they have to buy HUD property to do that. Our apartments are four-plexes. If you start tearing down our apartments in the back, that's 16 people you're going to displace. I have no idea where I would go. And, uh, so I think basically that's why I want to say that, all night I've heard about affordable housing, and this place has been there for 60 years. People go in there expecting to die there or go to assisted living or something. I don't even have the money to go to assisted living. I tell my brother if I die, throw me in the creek that's nearby, because, and I'm not good on distance, but I think it's like the creek is where that wall is, my apartment is where that is, and you're going to put a road in there. So if you leave my apartment, you could open the front door and I might have 20 feet in front of me to have this major road. So, for those of you that think it's a great idea to put that in, please drive down to our complex and drive in the back and see what you would be displacing. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Kathy? Thank you very much. And Joanne Cunningham. Oh, I know what happened, never mind. Joanne already testified. That's it. Anybody who got overlooked that just wants to let us know what they think? Okay, thank you very much. Close public hearing and we will move into deliberations. I'll need a motion.
Excuse me.
Nope, sorry.
I would hope there'd be an opportunity.
Oh, you want to ask questions of staff, I apologize. Yep, go ahead. Peter, I want to hear about the Pioneer Apartments. What's going to happen down there? Would you explain what you have in mind down there?
Sure, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Uh, the, uh, the street would skirt the east edge of Pioneer Village. Uh, we will, more than likely, in fact, I'm certain, we will impact the, I think it's a storage shed that's on the, on the east edge. Uh, I do not believe that we anticipate impacting any of the, any of the homes, of the four-plexes, uh, on there. Uh, there are two private streets that kind of loop around. Uh, one option would be to connect those streets to Marine Drive, the other option would be to simply cul-de-sac them and not provide, uh, access out to Marine Drive, in which case they'd continue to have access out to Fifth Street.
Okay, Councilor Cook.
So, the speed limit, Peter, would be determined based on if you were going to connect it or not, or would that already be preset? And I'm wondering if the road would qualify for a sound barrier or any kind of barrier for those apartments?
Uh, no, we're building a, a, a two-lane road, so this is not a freeway, so there's no sound barrier. Uh, this is a two-lane road, sidewalk on the east side, sidewalk on the west side. That's all it is.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Lewis.
Well, I've actually got a list, I'll try to, to whittle it down. I, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, um, Director Fernandez, that it is possible for the residents of Pioneer Village, um, those people that are going, that would end up living just west of Marine Drive between Glen Creek and Cameo, that those folks in those apartments would have the ability potentially to access Marine Drive, um, as a street to take them at, at least at this point, south. There, you know, there's, there's a question about the purchase of, of right-of-way, and I know before we had the issue of, of Polk County, but can you, can you explain to us, is there any type of blockage of purchasing what would be Marine Drive right-of-way? Is there any logical reason to wait, other than it's been proposed to do something different?
Yeah, no, we could, uh, we could certainly purchase the right-of-way. I think the discussion that the council had and the, and the, the information that we provided the council in February of 2016 and prior to that, when, when the decision to add this project, uh, was adopted by the council, uh, was adopted, uh, yeah, was talking about the council to put the project in the, in the budget, uh, had to do with the, uh, the right-of-way can be purchased, it's the question of, uh, there are significant pieces that are outside of the urban growth boundary. And, uh, so the question is, is would the city fund a street outside of the urban growth boundary? Uh, there's been a lot of testimony over the, over the last couple of years, uh, that it's legal to build a street, and it certainly is legal to build a rural street, and that's what the, what it says. So, so Polk County could certainly build those portion, those portions of the street, if the county commission felt that they could. Uh, the question is, is we would be acquiring right-of-way that is outside of the UG, outside of the city limits and outside of the UGB, and the question for the council would be is whether, you know, the council would be funding ultimately a facility that is outside of the UGB and outside of the, outside of the city limits.
And, and, uh, what was passed last year as far as the, um, what I call the wiggling of the urban growth boundary, that was for the specific purpose of bringing in all the land necessary to build Marine Drive to city standards because it would be in the city.
Right, and the, and that, uh, that was adopted by council, so, so as it stands today, that is, uh, that's a, an adopted, uh, expansion of the urban growth boundary. We are under appeal, so we're at the Land Use Board of Appeals, and it remains to be seen when, uh, if that is remanded and what ultimately occurs, whether that, uh, whether those properties would, uh, would ultimately be inside or outside of the urban growth boundary.
If I may, just a couple of, were quick questions. Um, it was mentioned, I believe, in Mr. Webb's testimony, that the city doesn't really have the right to build any of Marine Drive because the ballot measure was for property acquisition only, is that correct?
Uh, we checked, uh, before, uh, we came to council last, uh, February of 2016, uh, that was a specific question that we asked of our bond council, whether, whether, uh, the council could adopt a construction project, given the language in the bond, and we were given assurances that, uh, that council could do that.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Anderson.
So, as I understand it, Director Fernandez, when you say there's no impact on Pioneer Village, what you mean is... what you mean is you do not believe you are going to be displacing any people?
That is correct.
So isn't there a broader definition of impact? To me, impact doesn't just mean you're not going to displace people. You heard Ms. Syke, I think her name was, is the road's going to run right by her house. Don't you think that's an impact?
Counselor, in February of 2016, the council adopted a direction for us to build the roadway. So that's really what we're trying to do here.
Do you think that's an impact?
I'm sure, today they live in a road that loops, and then they'd have a through road that has traffic, so of course.
Do you think that's an impact?
I don't know.
Okay. Now, let's talk about the right-of-way. We've had a lot of testimony tonight about, we need an 80-foot right-of-way. We've got to buy an 80-foot right-of-way, et cetera, et cetera. My understanding from prior conversations with you was that the only place that an 80-foot need, right-of-way would be needed if the bridge comes in is where the bridge connects both north and south with the proposed Marine Drive.
That is correct.
So from that point on, all we need is a 60-foot right-of-way.
That is correct.
So it's not really an issue if we build a 60-foot right-of-way other than just north or south of where the bridge comes into Marine Drive, because that's all we need, even if the bridge comes in.
That is correct.
Okay. Then, Mr. Lewis asked you if the new Marine Drive is built, that three-block segment, that people could go to, go west to Marine Drive to then go south? And you said yes. Well, doesn't, wouldn't that section of Marine Drive end at Glen Creek?
Which, the section that is, that is in the project goes from Glen Creek to Cameo.
Okay, so going south, it would end at Glen Creek?
It is correct.
So in order to go any further south in the intersection of Glen Creek and the proposed Marine Drive, you'd have to go east, excuse me, go west to one of the other streets then to go south?
Well, council has never adopted anything, any extension of Marine Drive south of Glen Creek.
So the answer is, to go south, south of Glen Creek, you'd have to go east and take another street?
Yeah, the project is from Glen Creek to Cameo.
So then, why wouldn't somebody who lives in Pioneer Village, rather than going east to Marine Drive, to go south to Glen Creek, then to have to go west on Glen Creek, why wouldn't they just go west originally?
Well, I don't really know what you're asking me, Counselor. The purpose of Marine Drive is...
This has gotten very confusing. I'm not sure what your point is.
I'll move on to another question. Now, we've talked about, you ask with respect to Mr. Wig's point that maybe you couldn't build, you couldn't build on the Marine Drive because of the restrictions in the bonding measure. So you went and asked that advice.
That is correct.
So have you asked DLC DC whether or not you can build the OAR that we've talked about in prior meetings, whether that means you can go ahead and build on the two areas that it's outside of the urban growth boundary?
I have not.
Okay. Then, hasn't the city already purchased Marine Drive right-of-way or been given Marine Drive right-of-way outside the UGB?
I do not believe so.
Well, what about, by Deer Creek Crossing Apartments? Is that city-owned now, the Marine Drive right-of-way that is south?
I believe...
That is outside the urban growth boundary?
I believe all of the pieces, all of the rights-of-way that have been dedicated are inside of the, in fact, they're not only inside of the urban growth boundary, they're inside of the city, because we would not have, we could not have exacted right-of-way outside of the city limits.
What about the River Valley subdivision? Isn't that a right-of-way, Marine Drive, that is owned by the city? That is outside the urban growth boundary?
I think there is, there may be a small sliver that was a survey error. So I think we're talking single digits of square foot, of square feet, not the whole thing.
Okay, Peter, we'll get you out of the cross-examination there and into some real questions here.
Cross-examination is questions. I'm sorry.
Well, come on. You were out of order there, I think. Peter, you know, you referenced the February 16th, you know, February of 16, where the council approved what went on. But real frankly, you know, I was on there. We do this. We approve the staff recommendation. So I would like, really, for you to explain to me why the staff recommends this building, this three blocks. Why was, I mean, you must have considered other things, said this is the best thing. We think this is the best thing to do, moving forward with the money on hand.
Yeah, so we actually...
What's the rationale, and what's the pros and the cons?
Sure. So we actually went through a pretty extensive process with the council subcommittee at the time that provided us advice on what to do. And we went through a series of steps of, was it better to acquire right-of-way? Or was it better to build a road? Or was it better to do any number of things? In fact, we came to council a couple of times during that period, because the original, one of the original recommendations was, should we build, should we acquire right-of-way east of the river? The one parcel that is vacant just south of Pine Street? And the direction from council was, no, don't do that. Limit yourself to West Salem. And then after that, the ultimate direction was to build the road. You know, very simply, it's really a matter of, do you purchase right-of-way and have it sit there for a while? Or do you invest the money in a piece of road that's usable? We have done this in Salem. We have, there is a big chunk of right-of-way called Croydon Scenic Way in South Salem that's never been developed. We went out, we purchased right-of-way, and the right-of-way has been sitting there, well, for the 22 years that I've been here, so longer than that. So my personal feeling is that it was better to, it is better to build something with the bond dollars that we have, rather than go out and acquire right-of-way and await a future bond issue or await an issue. So that's what the recommendation was based on. But I want to stress that the recommendation was based, was developed with a lot of input from the council subcommittee on streets and bridges, and with the council at the time looking over the thing. So this is not one, there are many recommendations that are simply the staff recommendation. This one was worked over pretty hard by the counselors on the subcommittee, and then by the council in general.
So follow-up question. So is there any financial benefit for building this and allowing everything else develop down the road for, if you go? I think we had this discussion in the budget hearing, and I sort of, and I'm just going to say what I thought I heard was, if we build this, it's tangible, it's there, we've got the money. If we don't build it, and we need to build it at some point, we're going to have to go get the money or wait for a bond issue or do something, because it's not going to come out of the general fund. But I thought what I heard you say was, if we built this and then allowed, waited, well, we allowed this area to the north to sort of naturally develop, there would be people developing pieces of property, and as part of that, would probably, they'd have to build that section, if it was abutting there, that section of the road, and that could be paid by system development charges. Did I hear that right?
Right.
Which to me then says, to me says, that's a more cost-effective way to move forward, because you're not waiting for a bond. You're going to acquire that right-of-way with system development charges and not have to wait to float a bond to do so, depending on how long it takes.
Right. So what you see has happened is there are locations where development has come in, where we have, because we have a surveyed alignment that's adopted by the council. It's in the transportation system plan. We have exacted the right-of-way from properties. Where you see properties where, which is not very often in along Marine Drive, because it's right on the edge of the UGB. But where you see properties where there's access on both sides, then they actually built the street. My sense is that there are other areas where we could have the right-of-way dedicated to the city as other developments come up. If they're not taking direct access from the street, so typically on both sides, then we would probably have to build it. So I believe what I said at the budget hearing is that, yes, there would be opportunities for right-of-way dedications as other developments come in. We would probably have to fund building it, and then that funding could be either from SDCs or from a future bond issue.
One final one. If, if the council said, never, the last one would be, in the West Salem Neighborhood Association testimony, they quote that in October of 2013, the city of Salem estimated it would cost $1.7 million to buy the Marine Drive right-of-way from Fifth Avenue to River Ben Road. Is that fairly accurate?
Yeah, I believe they're taking that information. There was a staff report, there was an analysis provided to the council subcommittee, and I think later to the council in the staff report, that had our estimated right-of-way acquisition costs by segment. So if they're not including the segment that includes, which would be the most expensive segment, because we have to acquire, there's a couple of duplexes, and there's a four-plex north of Cameo. So once you have to acquire developed property, then that is more expensive. So if they take that portion out, I would guess that that is what we estimated back in 2013.
So if you did that, you'd now have another $1.7 million sitting there. What would you do with that?
I'd recommend that we buy all the right-of-way on Marine Drive, and not just starting on Fifth Street. The problem with Fifth Street is it doesn't connect to Glen Creek Road. We looked at that. We looked at that when we did this project. The whole idea is to get, the whole idea of Marine Drive is to get the folks, Mr. Clark explained it very well, is to get the people that are living in the new apartments and the new developments north of Cameo, and be able to get them down to Glen Creek Road so that they can then access the library, Roths, courthouse, and then have the connection down to the southern parts of what I call downtown West Salem. If we just use Fifth, then you get to Fifth, and then you have to make a left or a right, or you have to come across the Roths parking lot to further access other properties. So we look at that back in the late '90s, and it made sense to, it's a difficult connection. When Ms. Beery talks about, you know, that we're threading the needle, we are threading the needle. It's a very difficult connection. But it's important to make Marine Drive work the way it was intended to work when it was conceived in the late '90s. It needs to connect to Glen Creek Road.
Thank you.
Am I going to another part of the budget? Are we all just absolutely?
It's my lord, so...
It's all about the bridge, huh? Okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, I have a few questions, so I can better understand this issue, too. Looking at the total Marine Drive, what's planned, how much of the right-of-way have we already acquired, approximately?
I don't know the answer to that. There's some pieces on the north end with that, some rights-of-way that have been exacted, and some pieces that have actually been built.
So like, more than 50%, less than 50%?
Oh, no, it's less than 50%.
Okay, all right. I know you talked a little bit about trying to build something outside the UGB. Is there an exception process to that, building something? And this is just for, so I better understand this.
Counselor, I don't know how we would ask, I mean, I guess the council can make that decision, and we could go out and ask DLC DC, et cetera. But I don't know how we would ask the citizens of Salem to pay for a road that's outside of the city of Salem. So I mean, so yeah, there's rules, and there's this, and there's that. I mean, that's really the question that I guess the council would have to ask itself, is, you know, are we going to build roadways that are outside of the city? We had a situation not that long ago where Polk County offered us Michigan City Lane. And they approved it, and they said, here, it's yours. And we said, okay. We came to the council and said, we recommend you take it. We need to annex it. And so the council proposed it, and it was in the ballot, and it was annexed.
Okay.
So, you know, my recommendation would always be, as your Public Works Director, that we want to build transportation facilities for the citizens of Salem inside of the city limits. I mean, it's just that simple.
So it might be, if we did do that, we would go through an annexation process or try to start something like that?
Right, but we can't, but then there's this whole issue of the UGB, right? So I think we need to be inside of the UGB, and then we need to annex, and then we can build the road. Can we buy right-of-way? I believe we probably can buy the right-of-way. We just wouldn't be able to do anything with it until it was inside the UGB and annexed. And in February of 2016, the council had not yet decided to expand the UGB. So at the time that decision was made to build the segment of road that's in the budget right now, that was a continuous piece that could connect to something that's actually inside of the city limits and inside of the UGB.
Okay. And then one more question I have is, you talked about a council subcommittee that looked at options for Marine Drive and where they would go. And I'm curious as to what subcommittee that was, and then I'm curious as to, was there public comment taken during that subcommittee?
Yes, there is. It was, I apologize for jumping in. There was a, it was a council subcommittee for streets and bridges, not for Marine Drive. So it helped the staff with a number of policy issues that then ultimately came to the council. And since this was the last project that was going to be addressed or funded with the bond funds, there was a lot of that kind of discussion, what to do. And there was a lot of analysis and discussion. Should we buy right-of-way? Should we build the road? I mean, a lot of that work was done leading up to the decision in February of 2016 to include the chunk of road that we have in the budget right now.
And you know, when we're, sorry, do you know if the West Salem Neighborhood Association was aware of that?
The West Salem Neighborhood Association has been aware throughout. In fact, we have had, over the years, we have had several meetings in Pioneer Village, in the Pioneer Village Rec Center. Now, I know new people move in and out all the time, so we have not had a recent meeting. But we have, we have been in Pioneer Village, and there were people participating and came to the meetings of the council subcommittee, and then at the council meeting in February 2016. There's been extensive discussion for 20 years on this issue up to today.
Thanks.
Okay, do you want to move, do you have any other topics you'd like to talk about? Tom, are you done? Would you want to talk to him some more?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Are we just any questions for staff, or are we just talking about the budget in general?
Yeah, no, we're talking, do you want to bring some more staff down, talk to them? Do you have anything you want to talk about besides the bridge?
I would love to talk about something other than Marine Drive.
I'm going to call on you then.
Great.
Go.
Great. Being the only counselor who lives, I think, east of about 17th Street, the bridge is important to me and the whole issue, but I really want to talk right now about the fire department and a fire station actually in West Salem. And I made a proposal during the budget process to reopen the station. That did not garner enough votes to pass, but I have a new proposal tonight. And so, and I don't know if I need to do it in a motion now, or just if we're still just discussing.
Would you like to question the chief at all, or the city manager? They're here.
Sure.
Okay, why don't we bring the chief down?
That'd be great.
He's been sitting quietly up there.
Fire Chief Mike Kniblock.
Thanks, chief. So we have talked various times about opening your station that was previously open but is now closed. I think, believe it's Station 11 in northwest Salem. And during the budget process, I think you mentioned it was $1.1 million or somewhere around that to do so, to hire, train, and open. And we talked about some various options for getting that done. So do you have any ideas for other options to get that station open? Or I know that one of the things that we talked about was you're looking at a study for alternative response vehicles, that sort of thing. I think some council members had some concerns about sort of jumping in the middle of that process. So I just would like to hear your thoughts on where you're at with the alternative response study. And I know you have another name for it, and I can't think of it off the top of my head. I'll stop talking so you can say something.
Sure. I think the motion last time was $1.2 million.
$1.2.
And for nine months of service that we would start January 1st. And so it takes us about three months to get people trained up and in place. Moving forward, it would be $1.4 million for a full 12 months of operation for a 24-hour station. We are still shooting for July 1st. We are still shooting for July 1 completion. We have, I have the draft document with me tonight that I've been reviewing. It's about 140 pages. And we're still doing some analysis of different response models. So we don't have the study completed yet. We have some preliminary findings, but I, I don't feel comfortable really talking about those till we have a chance to fully vet all the options that we want to look at and then come back. As far as alternatives, I know there was a, an alternative motion for 800,000. And I think if posed that question, that would be less months of service. We could, we could do, you know, for half a million, we could do a, a three-month training and put them in, in service down the road a little bit further. So the thing to remember is the next year it's 1.4 for 24 hours, the following, the following July when they come into service.
So if I understand you correctly, for about a half a million dollars, we could hire, train and, and bring on, fully bring onboard and equip a new recruit class and have them ready to go, say at the beginning of the next fiscal year. Is that true?
The next July 1st, yes.
So that would be?
April, May, June, that would be the training academy portion. Three months prior to that, we would start the recruitment, but there wouldn't be any salary costs or equipment costs until they actually started in April. And that would put them in service on July 1st, not the coming July 1st, but the next July 1st.
Okay. And do you have any reason to believe that our call load is going to go down next year?
I do not.
Okay. And right now it's pretty much at its capacity or even beyond capacity? Is that true?
We are, we are seeing last figures, I think 6.6% increase over last year. So we, we added about 2,200 calls last year. So we're going to be in the range of 25 to 2,700 additional calls over last year's calls.
So you anticipate 25 additional calls over the, over what you experienced?
2,500.
2,500, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, man.
We were 22,000 last year, so we add 2,500 to that for this year.
All right. Thank you.
Chief, my recollection from the testimony during the budget was that you fully anticipated coming to us for a new engine company next year, that you saw the call volumes. Now, did I misunderstand you? That you saw call volumes increasing enough to really warrant a request?
The call volume is increasing enough to, we, we like to see an engine company that's running about 22 to 2,500 calls and that was the increase we saw last year. We added Engine 8. We added about a call, an engine company's worth of calls. If we continue that this year without an engine company addition, then we're going to see a decrease in our ability to meet the response time percentages. And so move that forward 12 months, we're going to be in worse shape than we are now.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
I just want to make sure, when you say engine company, that, that includes the, the fire facility or is that just people?
Station 11 is already in existence on Orchard Heights. The facility is already there. The equipment is already there. Fire truck, we already own it. This is a station that we closed in 2012. We have, we have all the equipment minus the, minus the turnouts, the bunker gear and that kind of personal equipment and uniforms for nine new employees, which is included in the 500,000.
So would, would we be adding, opening Station 11 because it's, it's the only option to increase our capacity or are there, are there other things that could be done to address the call volume?
So we, we are looking at some of those things in our, in our alternative response models. What I, like I said, I don't want to get too far into the weeds and what we've found so far, but we know that in 2016, had we had Engine 11 in service, we would have seen about a percent and a half increase in our ability to meet the response time citywide. So it has an impact citywide, much like Engine 8 did. We saw better response times in, you know, Station 9 on Battle Creek and Station 7 on Liberty because Engine 8's in service and we're not playing leapfrog with each other as much.
And last question, if I could. I think I heard you say that the, the conclusion of that study should be July this year?
July 1st. We, we have the draft document now, so by July 1st, we should have a, a better idea on some of the research we're doing. We'll need some time to make recommendations and then we'll bring that back as an information report to, through the city manager, to the city council. I would expect, hopefully have that very shortly after July 1st so we can have some recommendations there.
Counselor, you said, okay. Counselor Hoy.
And chief, could you refresh my memory? I, I believe we spoke that even though we're talking about a station over Northwest Salem, this actually is going to impact the, the response time in the entire city. So actually every ward, every, every, because we're so at capacity right now, it's going to help even, even though I live in East Salem, it's going to, it could potentially help response times in my areas because we won't be doing this sort of leapfrogging around the city and kind of backfilling.
Yeah. As I said a second ago, that overall in the city, if Engine 11 was in service with the 2016 calls, we would have experienced a percent and a half higher ability to meet the response time. That's mainly because when Engine 5 runs a call, which is the only engine in West Salem right now, and a second call comes in, the next engine responding is Station 1 from downtown. They have to go across the bridge. We talked about traffic today, today earlier. That's a challenge for us. It's a longer travel time, which is a longer response time. 60% of our calls happen in the core of town, so we removed a resource in the core of town to run a call here. When the next call comes into core of town, we have them driving further to get to that. So it's just a domino effect. Two engines in West Salem reduces the number of times that you have to go back across the bridge and it keeps your resources where most of your calls are, which is in the center part of town.
Thank you.
Actually, I, do you have a question of the chief? Because I have some.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for yielding. A chief, as I want to go back to a question that the mayor was asking and this is how I think I understand it. If we approve nearly 500,000 dollars for the last three months of this upcoming fiscal year to have the training, then, then the fiscal year after that, meaning 18, 19, you would have a full crew ready to be going.
That's correct.
And it sounds also to me like the only real place that full crew could go would be to the West Salem station.
Yeah.
Because all the other stations that are open already have full crews 24 hours a day.
That's correct. Now, the other thing that we're looking at in our study is concentration.
Sure, sure.
Station 3 on Lansing is running nearly 4,000, or they're being dispatched to 4,000 calls a year. They can't run 4,000 calls a year. So when we look at that study, we are looking at where we would have concentration issues that we could address.
Sure. No, I understand that. I just, just so as a practical matter, you are going to be coming back for full funding in 18, 19 for Station 10, I think it is. That's the West Salem?
11.
11, okay. Yeah. And that sounds good to me. I just am looking at the budget people and the manager that we're going to have to start planning for that, how we're going to spend that. But it certainly makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I have one last question, but my question's for Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Peter. My microphone person.
Thanks, Kelly, for, for being here. I, we've, we've heard a lot, I was not involved with the council at this time, but we've heard a lot about this idea of keeping a 15% holdover. I believe that's the general fund?
It's a, it's a policy for the general fund, yes. 15% working capital.
And, and fire expenditures come out of the general fund?
That's correct.
Okay, so, you know, there's a 600, a proposal to spend additional 600,000 dollars for preparing the, the team in this fiscal year and then the next year would be to keep it running and going 1.4 million. I'm just kind of curious, not so much this year, but next year, what, how does that affect that 15%?
Sure. And if you can give us just a second, we've got something ready to calculate that. A human calculator, yes.
Oh, he's calculating. He's calculating any calculation.
Paying no attention to the budget. We do fall under policy, we're below policy by the end of 2018, 19. I'm sorry.
Below, below policy by 2018, 19, if nothing else happens.
But by the end of that year or start?
By the end, by the end of that year, I believe.
By how much?
Is that including the new rate increase? Because didn't we just approve a new rate increase?
By about 4.4 million.
Kelly, is that including the new rate increase that was just on approval?
The new?
The new rate increase?
Counselor, you're going to have to talk into your mic. I can't hear a word you're saying.
Sorry. Ms. Jacobs, is that including the rate increase that was on the agenda tonight?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Those, those rate increases were for the EMS fund, which is separate from the general fund, separate source. Thank you.
Counselor McCoy.
The policy, it's 15%. Is that 15% of the revenues?
Of new revenues.
Or the expenditures?
Of new revenues.
Okay. So when I look at this year's revenues, they're about 117 and you do 15% of that, it's 111 and 6.
And when you assume growth, you know, as we're doing this, we could see.
So we're, we're going to finish, in this year's budget, as I look at it, we're right on the edge anyway, right?
Well, if we anticipate not expending, fully expending contingencies, which your expenditure budget includes 3 million of contingencies, we also anticipate between perhaps 2 or 3 million or 2 or 3% savings. So in total, anticipating 3% savings, we would recover about 6 million dollars between unspent contingencies and the expenditure savings.
And would that would put us where?
It would put us above, above policy by the end of the 17, 18 fiscal year, by about 2 million, I believe.
Okay, which would be a few percent. So it'd be, we'd be at 6, 16 or 17% probably?
Correct.
Counselor Hoy.
I'm sorry, I don't think I followed you when I asked my question about how much it would put us under. Because I had understood that it would cost us about 1.4 million dollars to fund the fire station for the full year. And I thought I understood you to say that would put us 4 million under and I was not understanding that math.
Well, we're, we'll already be under.
But how much additional burden would this cause? That was my question.
It would be a 1.4 million dollar additional burden per, each fiscal year.
Okay.
Wow.
So we're all. Broken policy.
Yes, we, by, as we're forecasting out in the next two years, we'll already be working in a, at a point where we'll be under policy. We'll be on, under council policy anyway by the end of 2019. With what has, is in the budget and what was added in, what was in the proposed budget and what was added by the budget committee, we'll already be working under policy by the end of 2019.
Counselor McCoy.
Kelly, if, this is more than just a council policy issue though, isn't it? Isn't it a bond rating kind of a issue too?
We will, likely when bond council and our financial advisors are finished with their review of the upcoming police facility, general obligation bond, certainly a, a note of concern will be the city's use of, of basically fund balance to fund ongoing expenditures in the general fund. Certainly absent a, a policy, absent a, a plan to correct that.
So, so if we're at 15%, we're okay? Is 15% adequate for what they're talking about?
I believe we'll, we'll, we'll know when we have the, the rating back from, from Moody's. The percentage is one factor, also a factor will be the current or the upcoming expenditures for fiscal year 18, 19, 17, 18, 18, 19.
Okay, so I'll rephrase it a different way. Did we, when we set the 15%, did we get input from the financial community saying, yeah, this is, that, that sounds like a good place to be? This is why we arrived at 15%? Or was it 15% because operationally it worked for us to get to October?
So, so we looked at a combination of things, one being the Government Financial Officers' Association recommendations. 15% was a little bit on the lower side. If you look at cash fund needs exclusively, over the past three years, we've done some analysis and, and we would have dipped into a negative cash balance had we not had at least 20 million dollars. So that, that 15% is right, very close to, to keeping even what the cash flow needs and not having to do some intra-fund borrowing.
Yes.
So for additional staff or for?
Sure, anything you want to do.
Perfect. I'd like to call Brady up from Neighborhood Services.
Okay.
Hi, thanks for coming in tonight.
Good evening.
So I proposed in the budget committee to increase funding for code enforcement and that was for the hiring and training for an additional code compliance officer, especially considering the inspections for the units within the city and considering the new code amendments that are in place that affect livability and the issues. How much would the required amount be for extending with one additional code officer?
At full burden, about 80, 85,000 dollars for a year.
Okay. And we talked about the person doing the inspections right now has 19,000 units that are expected a year.
That's correct.
Which is very difficult for one person to do. If you were to add an additional code compliance officer, how much would that allow for the inspections that we should be doing on the properties that were expected to be built in the city?
That would completely cover all the future growth for several, several years and the new properties covered by the short-term rental ordinance.
Okay, and then, thank you, Brady. Also, in my ward this past week, I took a lot of, I took an email about concerns around trees regarding the white oaks and protected trees in the area. Can you talk a little bit about if someone either, how that process would go if someone registered a concern that a tree was being cut and it happened on the weekend? What would happen with the current processes right now?
Currently, if we get a call about a tree being cut over the weekend, we would respond to it first thing on, on Monday. I like trees, but it's not a true emergency if one's cut down. The thing about trees is enough damage is done with the chainsaw within a minute that you can't save the tree if it's being illegally cut. So there's no amount of officers we could have to respond on a timely basis and stop it from happening to any single tree unless there's like a large development area, maybe a, a grove of trees that was being illegally cut in some development. So we could respond to it and, and stop that sort of cutting. So I think you're asking, does the capability for that kind of enforcement increase with this other position? And the answer is slightly yes. If there were two of the apartment inspectors, they would do all the housing inspections, but we would expect them to take on all the other work for those properties, the public nuisances that occur there, the strange legal cases, the zoning cases that come up that are strange at, at multi-unit dwellings. So taking that work on would relieve the pressure on the other folks who would then in turn have more of a capability to respond to like a tree case.
Thank you. And then, when was the last time the fee schedule was updated for removal or cutting down of trees that were protected?
The fee schedule for trees, I don't think has changed for many years. I think a white oak is still scheduled at about 2,000 dollars, I believe.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
I think one, just one question, Brady, thanks. As a practical matter, we live in a complaint-driven city as many are. Are you currently not able to keep up with addressing complaints in a timely manner?
We can keep up with the highest priority complaints on a timely manner. Dangerous buildings, derelict buildings, public nuisances, drug lab abatement, all of these things we get to right away. The other things sometimes take a little bit longer. Ordinary housing complaints or maintenance complaints of, of dwellings, sometimes tree cases. And then there's some things that we're not getting to very much at all because of staffing and the number of complaints, including shopping carts, signs on the public right-of-way, the small disposable signs that are placed, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Thank you, Brady.
Very good. Thank you very much, Brady. Anything else? Yes. Very good. Thank you very much, Brady. Anything else? Yes?
I had some questions for Deputy Director Fernandez.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Director, sorry. Director Fernandez, excuse me. Director, Director. So, Director Fernandez, are there, I was at the Minto Bridge this last week and had a really wonderful time, surprised about all the people there, a little bit of a wait for the restroom with two little ones. Are there additional plans in the master plan to expand restroom facilities around Minto or Riverfront Park?
Yeah, so, there'd be no restrooms at, in the conservation area of, you know, so when you cross the bridge, you know, for the first 300 acres. We have always wanted more restrooms, especially on the north side of Riverfront Park.
By Gilbert House?
Right, right, towards the rotary pavilion and that area. The park is in desperate need of a master plan update. We are recruiting for a park planner. We had a recruitment failure last year, so, we're just running behind. It is the top priority of the park planner to move on the Riverfront Park master plan, not just for the four acres that are coming in, but for the rest of the park. And one of the big issues is north-side restrooms, and perhaps an expansion of restrooms on the south side.
And along that line, with staff that are currently responsible for maintenance of the restrooms, or locking and unlocking the doors, are the staff at capacity with the current facilities, or would there be an expansion of facilities that the staff could accommodate?
We would probably be able to accommodate it. Restrooms are a continuing issue. I read the dispatch logs daily, and at closing time, and at opening time, they are, not so much at Riverfront Park, but certainly at other parks, it is a continuing issue with cleanup of messes, and people locking themselves in the stalls. And so, that just eats up a tremendous amount of time. But, no, we would add the restrooms, and we would not be requesting more staff.
Additional staffing? And what would the amount be to expand, you're saying it's already in the master plan to do a north restroom expansion?
It has always been our desire. The master plan, we need to redo the master plan. We're operating on a master plan that still had, I think, like a fountain in the middle of the park, and had a lot of things that really have changed over the years. So, we've always recognized the need for restrooms on the north side of the park, but the current master plan doesn't have that. That's why we need to update it. We, we're funded to update the master plan. How do we fund the improvements once the master plan is adopted is another question. So, I can virtually guarantee you that there'd be, that there'll be restrooms recommended in the master plan, or envisioned in the master plan. I can't tell you today how we would fund those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we've got about 45 minutes, and we've got some more to do. So, what we need to do now, if there's nothing more in the budget, is to begin to deliberate on the budget to move it forward toward the 26th. Ms. Hoy, you moved.
Do we need to close the public hearing to do that, or are we just ready to go?
Sure.
I'm a real guy. I feel so much better, thank you.
I know, I know. It's tough being a Roberts person. Go.
So, I would like to, we're not making motions at this point, we're just deliberating? Or are we actually making motions?
No, I need a motion to deliberate.
Thank you, thank you. I move that we adjust the fire department budget by $500,000 to hire and train additional firefighters to reopen Station 11.
Second. Osick seconded. Yes?
So, I think I've been pretty clear on this, but I just want to restate that I think that we have a critical public safety need in the city. And I realize that, you know, we don't have a ton of extra money to put towards this, but I think that this is, this needs to be a priority. We're going to be opening this fire station at some point, and I shouldn't say opening, I should say reopening. It's a fire station that we had for several years and then closed during the recession. I think it's time that we commit to reopening it. This will give us three months' worth of funding to hire and train those folks, to get them on board, and then we can focus next year on how to fund it for the full year. I think, I mean, we're past the critical need. Our response times are in a desperate situation. I think the entire city will benefit from this, and I think we need to reopen this station. I hope my colleagues will support that.
Thank you. I'm gonna comment on it as well. I support what you're saying, but I want to add that I think over the next year, we need to come to grips with additional revenue and a strategy for backfilling these dollars if we're going to continue down this road. I think the staff was very clear where we are, and I think that kind of public safety levy or something like it has got to be on the agenda. So, I will alert you, we'll be forming a revenue committee to begin to work on this ASAP.
Thank you. I agree with what both my colleagues have said. This is vitally important, but it's equally vitally important. We've got to find some way to get the funding for this. And as someone who actually proposed the $800,000 thing at the Budget Committee, of course, I'm in favor of $500,000, whatever it takes.
Ms. Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, the motion was a standalone. I'm wondering if we should actually have the budget on the floor so we can move around.
He has moved the budget by saying, "I'm going to amend the budget." I felt like that was how I heard it, was he moved.
I just didn't know if I heard the word amend.
Move to amend.
Mr. Mayor had my mind. He was going at the time. It's amazing.
That being said...
He's moving the budget within amendment.
Okay.
Right out of the chute.
It's like, just, the issue is, and the chief said it, we're gonna have a report within the next month, that $500,000 had fun three months. We're not gonna hire these people for several months. It'd still just be nice to see the report before we start saying we're gonna hire these people, to know what's in the report. I don't have any problem doing that. We do need to figure out a means to pay for it.
Yeah.
And I think that should all be part of the discussion, rather than just throwing it out here on the floor tonight, as we get the report to say, "Well, what do we do with this?"
Ms. Lewis.
Yeah, I want to echo Ms. Nanki's comments. The report, whether it may be informed anything or not, is crucial. I know, as all of us know, that they're basically looking at this blinders wide open. And they are looking around the country for innovative ways to supply their service. Whether that can create enough cost savings to pay for the fire station, I don't think we know yet. My concern is, and this is a fire station that is within shouting distance of my house, so if it were open, it would supply me. But my concern is, is the residents of West Salem have seen things open, close, and now we're talking about spending money to hire people. And if for some reason, we didn't have the money to open the station, $1.4 million, then those folks probably would not have jobs. And I just, I think that's, I think that's too risky of a situation, and so I can't support the motion.
I, if I may, I would just, and we can ask the chief to come down and speak to this, I think, but I would assume, just having watched this kind of thing over the past decades, it seems like, in other venues, you would deal with this through attrition. How would you deal with it, Chief?
That's how we dealt with it last time. That does present some challenges when you have to do that. If you're, if you're gonna hire them in April and not have funding for them in July, they're not even gonna be on the line yet. So, that's gonna, that's also gonna create a situation in the organization where people are gonna wonder if they want to come work here. And recruitment's tough as it is right now.
Ms. Hoy.
Chief, just to follow up on the report that we anticipate coming out on July 1st, is it a fair assumption that, no matter what that report says, it's not, it's going to include hiring additional firefighters? There's not going to be a way to answer the calls that we have and the anticipated inquiries with the existing number of firefighters? Is that correct?
That is correct. We're gonna, we're gonna need more resources. What we're benchmarking ourselves against in the, in the community and other departments of like size is other programs that they have in place. But like I have said before, I believe the engine company is the right answer, but I'm not gonna presuppose that until we get done with the report. But at the end of the day, that's, that's probably what the answer's gonna be.
Thank you.
Ms. McCoy.
I don't like to be a wet blanket here, but again, we're gonna sit there and hire potentially somebody, these folks in April, and we don't know if we have any money for them in July. I'm just not sure where we're going. The only way to vote for this is if you presuppose we're gonna spend the $1.4 million, that it's not clear to me we're gonna have to spend next year to keep it open. I don't know, that's the only way you could possibly vote yes. I'm not comfortable doing that, you know? And I'm the guy that was, the last time we did it, this is what we do, we protect the public. It's been, we're also wardens of the money that the taxpayers are giving us to spend. And part of that is protecting, protecting our bond rating and our credit, our credit with the financial industry. And if we're gonna start sort of going down the road where we think maybe we can afford it next year or not, and we end up, we can't afford it, and we're letting these guys go, I just think this is a sort of a risky way to go about doing business, and I'm not gonna support this either.
Okay. Well, I'm not gonna, I think I'll, I certainly respect your point of view, Ms. McCoy. That's certainly not, I think, what's on the table here. Frankly, the money is there. And the bond rating is problematic. We're talking about hiring people in April. A report that'll be out in a month, we can reverse this if all hell breaks loose. But I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna accept that somehow we're running out of money. That's not what's going on here.
We just heard our financial people say, "If we do nothing else, we're gonna be forced, four to six," I forget, was it four million? Four million in the hole in 1819, if we don't do anything. And we're talking about 500 now and 1.4, that makes it 6 million, if we don't do anything. And so, to make that decision, I respectfully disagree with your logic, you know? I don't think we're gonna find money this year. I guess if we don't spend the $2.5 million contingency, then just take it out of there now. Or we can pass this budget, get the report, and then have the discussion about what we want to take out of contingency to deal with the fire.
I've just been at this too long, is my problem. Yeah.
Sorry, just to clarify, Counselor and Mr. Mayor, the reason that the part of this motion that Ms. Hoy put up is that we're playing catch-up to be able to get the hiring, anticipating what the report will have. And also, it does put pressure on the new revenue committee, but there is a hope that with increased revenue, we would be able to mitigate what the budget, what Ms. Jacobs is talking about. Is that, is that right? Is that my clarification there?
You've got the revenue. The question is, well, it is there. Now, are you willing to go forward and say, "There's growth going on in this community"? We saw it this year. We'll see it next year, these unanticipated funds we hear about. And what people don't hire or elect us to do is support bankers. It's to support their safety. And that's the difference maybe in the approach.
Okay, and we had, they're gonna have to help me with the numbers, but I'm gonna guess we had about 5% increase in revenue, and we had a five-some percent increase in costs for labor and everything else involved, everything being equal. So, we spent all on existing services, and now we're adding to those services, which is gonna put us in the hole, and there isn't that revenue that you're citing.
The hole is the wrong description, Counselor. I'm sorry. I just can't accept that's not what this is, the hole. I like your Thelma and Louise. Come on, Counselor, let's hear that.
All right, repeating myself, I've said this now five or six times, and it's been, every year I've been on the budget, it looks like we're Thelma and Louise, and four years from now, we're gonna drive over this cliff. And my, my different analogy is, we are Thelma and Louise who are driving parallel to the cliff, not perpendicular to the cliff.
And I would say, you're about ready to take a right turn right in.
Counselor.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm clear on what Director Jacobs said. You said $4 million below, and I was interpreting that as below our 15% withholding from the general fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, we're not talking about 4 million in the red, and we're overall...
We can't actually operate in that way.
But as far as under the 15%.
Prior to tonight, our, the projections will be, will be in the red by fiscal year 2020. So, we are, we are on a path of being in the red. And I think part of the cliff discussion also depends upon the size of the potholes, or the size of the boulders that we're willing to accept, such as perhaps a higher interest rate when we issue our general obligation debt, the need to borrow from other funds to meet our operating needs. Those are some of the considerations that would go into our current, our current, our current spending. Likely, you know, absent new revenue, I would be back to you in 1819 asking, "What other services would you like to reduce or cut in order to maintain the fire department?"
I've got one more follow-up, just so I understand the motion. Just so I understand the motion, we're looking at $500,000 to add positions to the fire department that would begin in April of 2018, and fund them through June 30th, 2018. I have a quick procedural question, also. If we end up voting on this motion, are we voting for the whole budget, or just this amendment to the budget motion? And then there'll be opportunity to throw out other amendments after that vote? Is that correct?
Well, this is the full budget with the amendment, so if you vote no, there's no budget on the table.
What?
If you vote yes, can you make another amendment, is what the question is.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, 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 wait. So, as we're interpreting Ms. Hoy's motion, it was to move the budget with this amendment. So, if you pass it, the budget's done. So, if you want to make additional amendments, you need to vote them up or down. Now.
Is there a way to approach this in a better, a better way?
Could, could Ms. Hoy withdraw his motion, somebody would, to move to adopt the budget as proposed, and then Ms. Hoy asks for amendment to that? That would be cleaner, and would allow us to make other amendments.
Correct.
All right, we'll have to do that, and if you want to.
Do you want to do that?
No, he doesn't want to.
Will I? Yes.
Ms. Hoy moves the budget as presented.
Second.
Correct.
Okay, now he amends it.
Now, you've offered, offered amendment.
Who seconds that?
I'll second.
Okay, Osick seconds that, so we're back where we were.
Okay, good.
We're in a different place.
Yeah, ready to vote on the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Just raise our hands. All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion fails. Okay, Ms. McCoy.
Got a motion here, thinking about what we discussed most of the evening, so bear with me. I move council instruct city staff to take no action on any activity regarding the Marine Drive project in fiscal year 1718.
Second for conversation.
And the reason I'm doing this, we, we heard all kinds of testimony here. We heard some folks wanted, want us to buy the right-of-way, some wanted pave, some were confused with the 80 and the 60 foot. There was all kinds of problems out here. But the, the big issue, and I'm sort of, real frankly, I could go either way. I could say, "Yeah, let's build it," or "Let's buy the right-of-way." But I don't know that I've got enough information totally to do so. And one of the things is, because we've still got the whole issue with the urban growth boundary on appeal, and we're not gonna know what that answer is. So, I'm not, I'm a little reluctant to say, "Yeah, let's buy the right-of-way." If in fact, as Director Fernandez is saying, it's gonna be outside the, you know, city boundary, can we do that? Or if we do it, we're not gonna be able to build it? Well, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, what I, what this would do was, the money would be there, just wouldn't proceed during this year. It would stay there. We can deal with it once we have all the answers. It's still in the budget, so once we get those answers, we can take it up and move along later, or next year when we get to the budget process. But it takes it off the table. It takes this debate we've got going on down. We can proceed on with the business and move forward. So, I throw it out for your consideration, because right now, I don't know however you're supposed to vote, but I'm not sure what we're supposed to do. Or we just pass the budget and build that road.
Ms. Andrews.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up question for Director Fernandez on the appeal. On the appeal...
On the appeal that, of the decision to expand the urban growth boundary, wasn't that expansion for the actual right-of-way, or the bridge itself coming over and connecting to Marine Drive? It didn't really expand much of anything else?
I can address that. The decision that council adopted in December was for the bridge expansion itself and for the parts of Marine Drive that are outside the UGB.
And that would include, Director Fernandez, when you're coming down south and there's the curve that goes east to connect to the bone of contention on Marine Drive between Cameo and Glen Creek?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Casey.
Thank you. It was very contentious tonight about what should happen, and I appreciate your motion, Counselor McCoy, because I feel a little bit in the same type of spot. I almost feel like we should, Marine Drive's going to happen, first of all. I want to make that really clear. It's in the transportation system plan. It needs to happen. It needs to provide another way to get around West Salem, and this is the only place to put it because of the topography. So, we need to figure out, what is the best way to acquire what we need to build it and then build it? So, I guess I'm going to amend your motion to purchase, to amend that transportation project, 711503, so that the money from that bond is used to continue to acquire a right-of-way for the planned construction of Marine Drive. And, so first of all, I'm going to amend it. I'm going to end my motion, sorry. I don't want to do a rambling motion.
Second.
I'd like to substitute then. Because he said for God.
Can you repeat the motion?
Go ahead.
I move that we, that transportation project number 711503 be amended, so that the money from the 2008 street and bridges bond be used to continue to acquire a right-of-way for the planned construction of Marine Drive.
Second by Anderson, okay.
And I would like to clarify what I'm talking about. From how I see the problem, there is a contention between, do you do Marine Drive the way it's in the transportation system plan? Now, the preferred way, to clarify, there are two ways. There's a preferred way, and there's an alternative way. The West Salem Neighborhood Association is proposing the alternative way, going through Fifth Avenue Northwest. I am wondering if we can use the money to acquire the right-of-way that we can, so things that are within city limits, within the urban growth boundary, to continue that process, since it sounds like we don't even have half, or however much, right-of-way. We do have Marine Drive. And that we can revisit Marine Drive and the alignment of that. And I'm wondering if there's a way to kind of do both, to have this Fifth Avenue connection and also this other connection to Marine Drive? Because I see benefit in the West Salem Neighborhood Association proposal to create, and it says this right in the transportation system plan, to create a grid network for people to move around. But I, you know, hearing the subcommittee that happened and all of this, I feel like we need more conversation about Marine Drive, but I want us to be able to move forward also with acquiring the right-of-way that we can. Because I think it's really that one corner just north there of Cameo that is the contention, and everything else up to Riverbend is, we feel pretty confident about, so.
Is there much property left that, to purchase for right-of-way that isn't outside the urban growth boundary? I had a little trouble following your, how you described that. It sounded like very little was left. Maybe I misunderstood.
Is that a question, Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you. No, there's significant portions that are outside the UGB.
Inside the UGB to purchase, I think, if I understood, Counselor, isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah, basically, buy what we can now.
Inside the UGB.
Inside UGB, all the things that we can buy.
Inside the city limits, inside the UGB.
Because we're kind of striking a compromise, but the overall thing is, I think that this needs more conversation than what we've given to it, especially with the number of people coming out tonight, and especially with the comments of the West Salem Neighborhood Association.
Okay, and I guess the other question I have, just to follow up on my question, just how much? Isn't generally the way we do this, developers donate this as we're going through development, or we use other funds than these bond funds for this kind of acquisition? That's what I'm trying to understand. That got really confusing, I thought, in the discussion.
So typically, if we have a bond-funded project, we typically have enough funds to acquire and build the entire project. This is a project that only has partial funding, and it was really ill-defined exactly what it was beyond the language that's on there. That's why there was so much work done with the subcommittee to address what council wanted to do with the funds. So, that's, you know, why the decision was made to build the portion. If council wants to, if council wants to move towards a right-of-way acquisition, my recommendation would be, there's an adopted alignment, there's a surveyed alignment. My recommendation would be, acquire the right-of-way for the surveyed alignment. I have never said that we cannot acquire property outside of the UGB. I've only said, my concern is to build the road outside of the UGB. So, we can certainly, and I think our analysis, you know, prices escalate, so I don't know how much $3.6 million would get us, but my recommendation would be, you know, if we're going to acquire, then I would ask council to, I would recommend that, let's acquire, you know, here's the adopted alignment, let's acquire the right-of-way, and then we have a full alignment. To hopscotch around, I mean, if council doesn't have the desire to do a full acquisition, then my recommendation would be, then let's just wait. Because to hopscotch around is not a good practice, and not a good expenditure of the money.
The irony of all this is that it's the opponents of a bridge, which has supposedly nothing to do with Marine Drive, who are blocking us building Marine Drive if we can't get it inside the urban growth boundary, because the two have become linked. That's, and I don't know, maybe I'm misunderstanding. If I'm wrong on that, that is exactly what appears to be going on, is folks opposed to the bridge are also killing Marine Drive. Yeah, Counselor.
Well, my position about the bridge is pretty well-known, but I'm in favor of Marine Drive.
You can't be both.
Oh, you sure can.
How do you do that under the current lawsuit?
Well, we just had a discussion with Director Fernandez, that except for the area up around Hope Drive where it comes in, all we need to acquire is a 60-foot right-of-way, not an 80-foot right-of-way, and that can be done. And respectfully, I have a disagreement about the parts of the, what I would call the minor parts of the proposed alignment that is outside of the urban growth boundary. I think that the OAR allows that to be done. So, my view is if we adopt Counselor Kayser's motion, then it will be up to the Public Works Department to determine how we can do that, and that will include a discussion with DLCD about, can't we do this under the OAR that we've decided?
Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I, first of all, the third bridge is not the issue tonight, but if there's anybody in this room who doesn't think we're talking about the third bridge, raise your hand.
Tonight?
Yeah. Oh, no. No, we're, this, and Mayor Bennett is exactly correct. The most recent vote of the West Salem Neighborhood Association was to stand neutral on the bridge. West Salem is the area of town that is in most need of the bridge. Statistically valid survey done three years ago showed that crystal clearly. The street, as it's been proposed, is in the transportation plan. And through vetting, we came to the conclusion unanimously last year, this is how we're going to spend the money. We're going to build that street. Build it. And it may only be three blocks, but we're going to build it because that's what we've been waiting for. It's now 10 years later. Quite frankly, the members of Ward 8 are tired of talking about it. The proposal that's in the current budget, I believe, is what's accepted by the vast majority of people, at least in Ward 8. And to postpone it or try to change it at this point is not acceptable, absolutely not acceptable. To Counselor Kayser's point, the transportation plan does have a connection between, that goes north of Fifth Avenue and connects to the Marine Drive, that would be east of the current apartment. So, there is that connection in the transportation plan. Furthermore, from what I'm hearing tonight, which disagrees with what the fear tactics have been, with propaganda like this that's been taken around the neighborhoods, it is quite possible this street could be built without disrupting or having anybody in Pioneer Village have to move. And furthermore, the street would be open to, I mean, the apartments would be open to Marine Drive, so there are at least those folks that would benefit with the street built out. I don't see any benefit for the relief and congestion in a plan that would not create any of the street at all. I just don't. And so, I...
Okay. Yes, Counselor Kayser.
Thank you. Just want to make it clear that while I'm opposed to the bridge, I am in favor of Marine Drive. And when it was adopted into the transportation system plan in mid-'90s, there was no bridge alternative, there was no EIS. It was adopted as it was, to provide that north-south connection. I don't believe it is fiscally responsible right now to spend this money to build three blocks that go in a loop. And I think it'd be more fiscally responsible to actually service the people of West Salem and start acquiring that right-of-way for Marine Drive. Because otherwise, what are we getting at? We're getting at a three-block loop, essentially, that really services very, very few people, when we could be directing that money to a longer-term goal of acquiring all of Marine Drive. I actually made a list of the pros and cons of this, and I thought, if we don't have the bridge, what are the pros and cons? If we have the bridge, what are the pros and cons? And you know what? It's the same list. So, I think it's more prudent for us to use our money to acquire a right-of-way. I think it demonstrates to West Salem that we're serious about Marine Drive. Otherwise, we complete this little loop of Marine Drive, and it's like, then what?
Counselor Nanki.
Yeah, and having, or being the only surviving member of the Streets and Bridges Bond Committee, we had a lot of discussion on it. We looked at several maps, and we made a recommendation, and council approved it at the time. We haven't, we kind of saw a little piece of it at budget time, and we've had back-and-forst, but we haven't really, as a council, looked at that piece that we originally saw, and what the option that West Salem Neighborhood Association voted on and pushed forward as well. Previously, it was like, can we have a work session? Because this isn't really about budget anymore tonight. We're talking about two specific projects. Fire, station reopening, and a teeny piece of Marine Drive, or a longer piece of Marine Drive, with or without the bridge in your head. That I'm going to vote no to continue this meeting at 10, when we could be dealing with these issues separately and outside of the actual budget process. Neither of them raises the, this one changes nothing, except for a project that happens to be listed inside of our plans that we could change at any time during the year. The fire department issue, we could, it's not increasing the budget committee's recommendation by over 10%. We can do that whenever we want as well. But I think we should really look at this alignment. Does it make more sense to buy the right-of-way? Does it make more sense to build something? And people can't see right-of-way. People can see building. And that was where we came to the conclusion on putting the project in as it is now. So, we can vote on it, we can talk about it, we can actually look and understand the entirety of it, because I don't think half the council understands the actual project either way.
Yeah.
I don't want to comment, except to make a point of order. I think that what Counselor Kayser did was, is it a substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay, so, if we vote on that motion, if it loses, then Counselor McCoy's motion is back.
Right.
And his motion is, put everything off, not spend money one way or the other.
For this year. We can change our budget at any time during the year as well.
Right, and Counselor Kayser's motion is to go ahead and buy the right-of-way.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, Counselor.
Okay. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to Counselor Kayser.
No, 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 let's slow down.
Pardon me?
There's more amendments. You've got three on the floor already.
Okay.
Now, we've got a, we've got the budget.
You have the motion to approve the budget.
An amendment.
Amendment and a substitute.
Substitute. We've got three right now.
So, you can't negotiate with the maker of a motion to amend it?
No, it's over.
No.
No, that's consecutive.
Yeah. Let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and deal with her motion, and if you want to try another motion, that'd be okay, okay? Just to get, just to clear the decks for a second.
To clarify, I would be, I would be willing to withdraw my motion if we could, if we could have more conversation about these, about this, not tonight.
Good.
But later. And support Counselor McCoy.
So, you go back to McCoy's.
But I'm really interested to hear what you have to say.
Okay, are you withdrawing your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, the second is okay.
She withdraws it, I withdraw.
Okay, we are back to Counselor McCoy's. We're not going to do anything this year, either way.
For the time being.
For the time being, right. But his motion is really to cover the budget year, and then we can always adjust it, as Counselor Nanki said.
Is this only in relation to Marine Drive, or is this to the whole budget?
No, no, just Marine Drive.
Just Marine Drive, okay.
Just this Marine Drive issue. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I can't go along with kicking the can down the road anymore. You know, we're grownups here, and I think it's time to fish or cut bait. So, I'm going to propose a substitute motion, and that is, that the city take the $3.6 million that is now allocated for a specific purpose, and use those funds to purchase as much of the remaining right-of-way on the established, the city's transportation plan established alignment of Marine Drive. The purchase is to be completed from Glen Creek north to Riverbend Road, as much as possible.
Wasn't that Kara's motion?
No.
I'll second for this motion.
Okay. Yeah, if we can't build it, which we aren't there tonight, then the one hope is to spend that money that's been sitting there for 10 years. Spend it on something that could accommodate, I think, what everybody here is talking about. They all might not mean the same thing, but the alignment has set, has been set in the transportation plan. To finish the acquisition doesn't kill anything, and it does spend the money. And so, I encourage you to accept the compromise.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? You ready?
I just wanted to say, I'm still in support of Counselor McCoy's motion to wait.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's two. Bennett, Lewis, okay? So, that motion fails. Okay, McCoy's motion's on the table. All those in favor of McCoy's motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay, so, we're back to the budget as amended? Yes.
So, one quick amendment for the budget?
Yeah.
This will be the time? So, I would like to amend, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for $85,000 to fund a code-compliance officer for the upcoming year.
Okay. Second by McCoy.
I think that we, I think I've made a pretty strong case previously, but just so that we all understand the complaint-driven process and how that affects livability in our neighborhood, and also the changes that are happening with amendments on the table, it's really important that we fund the services that we have to be able to provide the services that we need.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands. Okay, motion fails. Okay, what's next? Yes?
I didn't hear the vote. What was the result?
By four.
Which way?
No.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, that's it, we're ready to go to the main motion on the amended budget.
Wait.
No? Yeah, that's where we are.
Right.
Right, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying no.
I was saying no to her.
Oh, okay. I was just trying to make sure I wasn't headed down the wrong road here.
The only amended part is McCoy's.
McCoy's is in. Okay? Okay. You can still go back and redo that fire thing if you want to do the right thing.
I'm sorry, Mayor Bennett, I just want to clarify then that the budget that you are approving is the budget that was in the staff report. The appropriation remains the same. The $3.6 million is just going to lay fallow.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll just whisper nothing.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So you'll get to vote on it again at our next round. Now, we have accessory dwelling units up. So I would appreciate a motion to, I'll open a public hearing on this, or, no, you need to read it, don't you, first? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony to amend the Salem Revised Code to allow and establish standards for accessory dwelling units in all residential zones, most commercial and industrial zones, and the neighborhood center mixed-use zone. The applicable criteria are SRC 1110.085, Salem Area Comprehensive Plan Sections 2 and 4, and statewide planning goals 10 and 14.
Okay.
Oh, gosh, should we still have a special?
Open the public hearing.
So we have a chance for staff presentation, or if you want to make a motion to continue?
Do I open them? Doesn't matter, does it?
Yeah, we did see first.
I'm going to make a motion that we can...
We did see first.
We are going to continue, I move we continue this hearing until our next meeting. Okay? Yes?
I don't, I agree with that motion, it's just I want to apologize to, I know there are people here for ADUs, and I want to urge that we put that on the beginning of the agenda or close to the top of the agenda next time, rather than...
Be the first public hearing.
Yeah.
Sorry. But look how much you got to hear. Okay, good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Where are we then?
Thanks for hanging out with me.
Yeah, Counselor Anderson, you have a motion?
Yes, I move that we adopt the staff recommendation to purchase the property at the northwest corner of the old north campus of the city, of the state hospital.
Second. Second by who?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, now I pulled it, but I just want to say it's a fantastic idea.
I'm even more sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's a fantastic idea. I appreciate all the hard work, and this should be celebrated, that we can do this, and it was because citizen involvement that moved this forward.
Absolutely. Counselor, I also want to add to that, the thanks that have been given to Counselor Clem, Courtney, I want to mention Eli Brody and Ian Johnson for their tremendous work on this.
That's Ian Johnson.
And Carol, Carol Snyder, and then two people at DAS have been tremendously helpful, Sharon Ryan and Darren Reitman. Those guys, I think, just did a bang-up job, really helping us get this done. So, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, motion passes. Okay, let's go to the first readings.
Well, the information I do, people have questions.
Yeah. Let's keep moving, yeah, we'll go for...
We're happy to talk with the Democrats.
First reading?
Okay. Ordinance Bill 1817, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 3652 and 3672 Malle Place Southeast, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District 1, the East Salem Sewer District, and the suburban East Salem Water District.
Counsel Anderson?
I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by McCoy. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, second readings, is that where we are?
Ordinance Bill Number 917, an ordinance relating to parking, amending SRC 78.240 102.005, S. 102.040, 102.045, 102.055, 102.060, 102.135, 102.245, and creating new SRC 102.067. And here with the hearing. Counselor?
Wait, we have a motion?
Oh, pardon me.
I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
I'm sorry, the second was...
Ahoy, sorry. It'd be same on the next one, too.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kaser?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osid?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye.
An ordinance bill Number 517, an ordinance relating to short-term rentals and accessory short-term rentals, creating new provisions and amending SRC 30.005, 30.010, 30.035, 30.040, 30.050, 30.055, 37.20, excuse me, 37.020, 37.060, 59.010, 59.405, 111.005, 111.010, 111.090, 111.095, 400.030, 400.3035, 400.040, 510.005, 511.005, 512.010, 513.005, 514.005, 515.005, 520.015, 521.005, 530.040, 545.005, 554.005, 806.005, 806.015, 806.055, and 806.075.
I move the staff recommendation.
Second. Aye. Kaser.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kaser?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osid?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye.
Ordinance Bill Number 717, an ordinance relating to amending the utility code, amending SRC Chapter 70, 70A, 71, 72, 73, and declaring an emergency. Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kaser?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osid?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye.
Last one. Ordinance Bill Number 1617, an ordinance relating to a change to the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan Map designation and neighborhood plan map designation for a .57 acre portion of a 1.66 acre site at 1011 Lancaster Drive Northeast. Counselor Kaser?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osid?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye, 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 aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye.
We have one more.
We're at 10 o'clock right now.
I move we extend the meeting by three minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay.
7.2E.
I'm sorry.
7.2E.
Don't worry, we only have three minutes.
Yeah, we are, time's running.
It's a short one.
She need the pack, she need this?
That's yours, that's your marijuana.
Yes, it is. I'm going to stop later on the way home.
Ordinance Bill 1517, an ordinance relating to the change of the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan Designation and Neighborhood Plan Designation for 2440 McGilker Street Southeast.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
You run out the clock on us?
Counselor Nanki?
That was a nay.
Oh, nay. Counselor Osid?
Wait, do you skip the Hoy?
McCoy. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to punch you here.
Just a second, McCoy, Nanki's a nay, McCoy's an aye.
All right.
Osid?
Aye.
Aye.
Hoy.
Hoy, aye.
Aye.
Aye, too.
Aye.
And Mayor.
Aye. Okay, is there any further business for the council? If not, we adjourn.